Executive session this evening. According to Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, Preface C, Preface B, Legal Advice. Board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters. There is also a personnel Colorado Revised Section 24-6-402, Preface C, Preface B, Personnel Staff Member Addressing Board. Okay, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll take my roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Excused.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
We're here.
Here. Okay, we will now move into executive session at 5:40. Bring this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 24th at 6:43. Can we please rise for the pledge allegiance and also a moment of silence on the individual by name of Fred Hanson for the individuals that attend Hanson Elementary. The school is named after this individual. He passed away on Friday or on Sunday night midnight at, and he was 94 years old. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Mr. Drilling?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Excuse.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Here.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes on January 10th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Combs?
Aye. We will have now at this time recognitions and celebrations, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, Governor and Board President, we do have two. We have DuPont Elementary that we want to recognize and Hanson Elementary. We will begin with having the principal, Pat Almeida of DuPont School, please come up here and give us information on the recognition for your school.
Good evening, President Rola, distinguished board members, Superintendent Abrego. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize Estella Abeda, third grade teacher at DuPont Elementary School, for her dedication to all members of our military. Estella organized the G.I. Go Fund Jeans for Troops and set up contacts across the district. Jeans for Troops Day was organized in 2014, 2015 to commemorate Veterans Day. This program benefits the G.I. Go Fund and supports military veterans and their families across the country. The G.I. Go Fund is an organization on the cutting edge of offering support to veterans, providing veterans with innovative ways of finding employment, securing their educational and health benefits, as well as providing aid and assistance to low-income and homeless veterans. Since their founding, the organization has helped tens of thousands of veterans improve their lives and give them the capacity to provide and care for their loved ones. Our participation in the past has ensured that the organization was able to provide for our heroes and with your continued help, we will support our veterans, including those returning from Iraq and Afghanistan and the many veterans from previous generations. This year's Dress Down Day was held on November 7th in Adams 14 and paid tribute to the many men and women who sacrificed everything for our nation. This program gives participating school employees an opportunity to wear jeans to work after contributing $5 to the cause. And believe me, they love to wear jeans to work. Participants were given a Jeans for Troops sticker to wear on their shirt. This year, Estella and her site-based contacts were able to raise $1,295. For those of you who do not know Estella personally, her commitment to our active-duty military and veterans is true and felt close to home. All three of her children enlisted in the Air Force after high school graduation and have served our country in a variety of capacities. Her willingness to organize this effort is especially poignant in Adams 14 because it honors all those individuals that have served our country and make Commerce City their home. Please join me in honoring Estella Abeda and the G.I. Go Fund Jeans for Troops.
Can you come up in front? We'll take a picture. Cameron? Okay, and we'll go down with her and take a picture with her. Where's Kiko?
It's right there. Remodeling.
One, two, three.
Stay with the back.
Of course you do.
Ready, set.
Hi, I just want to say thank you for all the participants and for everybody wanting to help out for the G.I. Go Fund. It's something really near and dear to my heart. My kids have served in the military 13 years for my daughter and then my boys were six and four years. And my daughter has served twice in Iraq and it's just something that's near and dear to me. So I thank you guys for all of the support that you've given us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have one other one. We want to recognize students from Hanson. I think we have quite a lot of students here. So the principal of this, would you please come up and give us information on your school's recognition?
Good evening, Mr. Rola. Good evening, distinguished members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Abrego. I am very, very excited to tell you about what happened at our school. The Denver Art Museum adopted our school starting last spring. They made contact with our school and our school was one of three schools adopted in the Denver metro area to go and spend a day. Our second graders through fifth graders went on a field trip to the Denver Art Museum. And then after that, thanks to the help of our teacher, Ms. Sarah Phillips, come on, Sarah. Because then if they have questions, you can answer them. You're the art expert. After our students visited the Art Museum and spent the day at the Art Museum, we also were very fortunate to have between 15 and 20 parents that went along on the field trip with us to help us with supervision. Then Ms. Phillips had this tough task of identifying student artwork that would be on display from November to, I think, the beginning of January, the very early January, at the Denver Art Museum. So our students' work was actually on display there. And they had a nice ceremony on a Saturday for all the students that were chosen and their families. And many of them are here today. Do you have any questions for myself or for Ms. Phillips? No? Okay. We do. Ms. Monica, can I get them?
Yeah.
Our first one is in recognition of Ms. Phillips and her dedication to our students and their artwork. Thank you for always letting us move on to some questions. Thank you. Yurale Cordova Tovar? Saera Torres Zapata? Juan Hernandez Sabala? Mr. Gonzalez Migos? Eric Torres Cruz? Abigail Malgonado Valliar? Sorry, Cameron, I thought I was speaking loud enough. Adriana Ortega? Mia Martinez Minjares? Mariana Martinez Guzmán? Elijah Gutierrez Masburger? Itzel Ramirez Rodriguez? Juan Cabrera Reyes? There were 33 of our students that were recognized and honored that day. Thank you. Andrew Martinez Coronado? Ariana Hernandez Soria? Karina Esquivel Pichardo? Jason Hernandez Jacobo? Jenny Hoover? Alexa Terrazas Rios? Skylar Stroh? Adrian Anaya? Yadira Cabrera Reyes? And Abriel Lopez? There's a couple things I want to let you know. The Denver Art Museum found me at the end of our presentation and they spoke about our students and they said they had never had a group of such well-behaved students as those that were at Hanson. Thank you for shaking your head because Mr. Archuleta is our board member. So ride on, Mr. Archuleta, ride on Hanson. I know it's maybe a little bit different, but could all of you parents please stand up, please, to recognize you as well? You're part of this team. Thank you.
Okay, let's go up there, shake their hands, and then come back up here so we can take a photo.
Okay.
So we get all their parents.
Oh, we have a couple kids that came in.
Oh, okay.
Adamaris. She just came in. Yay, Adamaris! Alice, Adamaris Lopez. As you're all shaking hands, one of the privileges that we had to look at when we were there at the Denver Art Museum was a Mananitas program. And they were, we actually got to meet the author, the artist that was there doing her representation of the Day of the Dead. So it was pretty exciting for our kids to actually have the opportunity to do activities and also to meet the artist.
Yes, you can. 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 Yes, we'll stand up and it's, where's Cameron? Is there? If you can organize them somehow. And we also, if the parents want to come up and take a picture with their child or student, please do so. Don't be scared.
So we're going to have some of the students come around, come down front. All the way to you. Run in front. Jacob.
Did we could stand in the middle? We could do the picture in front of them. Can we stand up here in the back?
Yeah, we'll stay back here. Well, yeah, he could stand anywhere. I could stand on the chair.
So let's take a moment and let parents take the pictures that they would like and then we'll take the group picture.
Okay.
Hanson parents, you also will have access to the pictures that I take. They're going to be available on the Board of Education website page. They'll also be at the Hanson website page. So if you have any questions, you can ask at the office. So any of the pictures that I take, you'll be welcome to as well.
So I need everybody nice and close. Board of Education members, please step, Superintendent Abrego, please step as close to the dais as possible. This is a good thing, we have all our parents on the side. And if, as soon as your parents get your pictures, go ahead and step to the back or to the right.
Mom's dance, are you okay if I join you?
Yes, of course. It's fun to do.
Ms. Phillips, come on, send a picture with us.
Okay. I think in order to get everybody in the same picture, from the dark blue shirt over, if you folks can join everybody down the front, then the picture will be. So everybody, come on down front here. And even parents, if you want to come down here, do it with your kids.
Don't you miss the patter of little feet in the house?
Okay, nice and close, everybody. I need everybody a little bit closer. Ready? Let's be right here. One, two, three. Stay there. Ready? Set. And one more picture. One, two, three. All right, good job.
Is that it, Dr.? Good. We will just take a couple minutes. So if the students want to leave, because I know they have school tomorrow, they can go ahead and leave. If parents and students want to leave, do so at this time, please. Thank you. All right, man, good job.
Check, one, two, check, test. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to audience comments.
As we move on to audience comments, just want you to remember that you have, state your name, you have three minutes to speak, and all comments need to be district-related. Your comments can suggest improvements but should be productive. You can provide a written statement to the board for review. The president can recognize a board member or superintendent to respond to questions to clarify a district's position. There will be no seating of time between speakers will be permitted. First speaker will be Carol Martinez.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Abrego and Mr. Rola and distinguished members of the board. My name is Carol Martinez, student body president at Adams City High School. And this is Caleb Prado. She's a representative of the senior class. We just came here to thank you guys for your continued support in high school athletics and our arts programs and all of our events. We also came to thank you for recently purchasing the fridge for concession stand. It's a really big help and all the students really appreciate it. So we just want to let you guys know that we're very thankful for everything that you do for us and that we'd like to see you at our second semester events. We're planning a lot of big things this year and it really means a lot to us to have your support. So that's really it. Alice, do you guys have any questions or comments for us?
No, just keep up the good work at the high school.
Thank you.
Went to the ball game last night and it was packed with our students all over the place and stuff. And so I walked in, I was able to see the new refrigerator and made that whole place look cleaner and a lot better and you guys stocked it up real good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to need Deborah Figueroa. I know, you can shoot me.
Or Figueroa.
Figueroa?
Deborah Figueroa. Deborah Figueroa in Spanish. My name is Deborah Figueroa. Good evening all, in the sake of saving words. So good evening all. Guys, I think we're going to end up, like always, with questions more than sharing. I'm here to share a big concern and one of the main reasons I'm here today is because I really believe in the potential we have here at Commerce City, all of our students. So the first reason I'm here is to really speak for them, for those that can't speak. I'm committed to them and just watching the history of Commerce City, I'm just worried as an educator today. I'm standing in front of you as a worried educator. Couple of things I'm worried about. I'm worried about teacher turnover, as you saw in my, it continues to be a factor that I think will sabotage any and all good thinking, any and all good new appointments. So I think until you get a good handle on your teacher retention mainly, it doesn't matter what programs we bring, it doesn't matter what fabulous new talent we bring. I think right now, the consistency we might have had has been on a few board members' participation. So given that, I would hope that we're sticking to the mission of the district, which is collaboration, which moves me again to then my other concern, which is the calendar, which ties into the turnover, which ties into dialogue, which ties into...
I know, you can shoot me.
Or Figaroa.
Oh, Figarola.
Deborah Figarola. Deborah Figaroa in Spanish. My name is Deborah Figaroa. Good evening all, and the sake of saving words. So, good evening all. Guys, I think we're going to end up, like always, with questions more than sharing. I'm here to share a big concern, and one of the main reasons I'm here today is because I really believe in the potential we have here at Commerce City, all of our students. So, the first reason I'm here is to really speak for them, for those that can't speak. I'm committed to them, and just watching the history of Commerce City, I'm just worried as an educator today, I'm standing in front of you as a worried educator. Couple of things I'm worried about. I'm worried about teacher turnover, as you saw in my, it continues to be a factor that I think will sabotage any and all good thinking, any and all good new appointments. So I think until you get a good handle on your teacher retention mainly, it doesn't matter what programs we bring, it doesn't matter what fabulous new talent we bring. I think right now, the consistency we might have had has been on a few board members' participation. So, given that, I would hope that we're sticking to the mission of the district, which is collaboration, which moves me again to then my other concern, which is the calendar, which ties into the turnover, which ties into dialogue, which ties into the community concern. And I'm speaking to like cause and effect, and I'm worried, I'm just really worried. And yes, I'm all over the place, because I have not a lot of time. So, the questions I have about the calendar, it was a draft. When was it created? How do we communicate mainly to parents? I want to know what languages, what mediums. I found out about the draft calendar as an employee this weekend, and got an actual copy yesterday. So I'm concerned, I'm concerned, it's a draft. One of the big things we have is mistrust. Again, back, cause and effect, dialogue. So, another unspoken act, it appears, lack of communication, and that creates more distrust, cause and effect, community doesn't support us. So, wrapping it back up, teacher retention, big concern. We don't feel supported with experience, without experience. If our kids are not supported, if our parents are not supported, I really believe in this vision we say education, but I'm worried we're not collaborating. And I'm worried we're just talking, and we're not having dialogue, which involves both sharing. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Do we have any comments?
Hold on, Ms. Figaro. So, you're an employee, you said? So you were not able to look at the calendar when it was first drafted?
Wasn't even aware that there was a draft. So, I look at my emails in the morning, and I look at my emails at the end of the day. I'm a middle school teacher, I have 100 students. So, we have a fabulous boss that communicates to us on a regular basis. I feel that she would have communicated a draft, an email, a message, posting, a call. None of that, it was a friend that came to a board meeting that saw a printed draft.
Well, maybe Dr. Abrego can speak more to how the process went with the calendar.
But that's not the only thing, a main concern is teacher...
I understand, we're taking it one at a time.
Teacher intention.
Okay. Doctor?
Do you want me to respond, Mr. Rola? It's going to, do you want me to respond, there's going to be a section where we're going to speak about this?
No, we'll be, we will send back, we will respond at the next board meeting to your questions.
Okay.
Dr. Abrego will have something to answer your questions next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that is all for audience comments. Before we move on to superintendent's report, I would like to welcome City Council Andrew Amador. Can you please rise and wave? And it's good to have, always have somebody here from the city council. Here, okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
We do have some people that are going to help me today. We want to recognize one of our schools and have them give you an update. So, we first have a report from Monaco Elementary School.
Good evening, President Rola, Superintendent Abrego, and esteemed members of the board. It's a pleasure and privilege to be here this evening to share with you more about some of the strides and challenges we've confronted at Monaco and our progress this school year as well. Our work to really, around two major goals, bolstering student achievement and deepening family engagement. And what'll come up first is our vision, which we created as a staff, really looking ahead. And it comes alive every day at Monaco, and it's tied to what we do with students, with staff, and with families. I'll give a moment for it to come up, and what it really speaks to, two of our character traits, we have five character traits that are really a major thread in what we do as a school. And two of those are personal best and collaboration, which have become high values in what we expect of our teachers in terms of their collaboration, as well as what we want to see in the classroom. We want to see kids working just as hard as their teachers are. So collaboration's fundamental, as is personal best.
As we waiting on your PowerPoint presentation to pull up, if I'm not mistaken, the board policy was, all presentations supposed to be present to the board by our Friday packet. All presentations, the board said, if I'm not mistaken, last year, supposed to be in our packet, so we can read them and look at them by Friday to Monica by 12 o'clock, so we can go over them in case we have questions. And you just presented us with your presentation today. Just FYI.
Okay. So the slides have all the information we're sharing, and even a couple additional pieces we knew there wouldn't be time for tonight. So, we wanted to start building off the vision, really sharing with you our current reality around student academic data and what we're doing about it, some of the analysis we've done to look at what's worked and what hasn't worked that we've done in the past. And then really looking forward to sharing with you a lot of the hard work we've been doing as a staff and school community since last spring, to make some really strong leaps ahead in these last six months. So, starting with some of the data from our early grades, want to draw your attention, you'll see that the improvement in kindergarten, first and second grade, we're proud of as the slide shows, there was improvement from last school year compared to the previous school year. So we see an upward trend in our early grades that we're proud of. As you look at the next slide with our intermediate grades, that's where our concerns are, where we're not seeing adequate growth. So as we look at reading, and particularly in math, you can take a look and see solid trends, positive trends in the early grades. But in particular, in our upper grades, that's where we did not see acceptable growth. And so, we last spring began to do some great work. We were one of four schools in the state that were selected to do the CEA and NEA's Better Schools Grant. So we went to Denver monthly with our teacher leaders. And that was when we began, even though we didn't have our park data yet, that was when we began to look at, what do we need to do to take Monaco forward? So in some of our analysis, what we realized was not, not having a consistency of programs and even this year, benchmarks implementation, we're seeing making a significant difference in reading. Our focus on improving staff trust, that was part of our UIP, one of our major goals last year, was much needed, and it revealed a number of divisions, and too much focus on adult issues and not enough student-centered focus. That work around trust was necessary, but it splintered our focus on academics. We also reflected on internal and external pressures that really impacted our climate and culture in a distracting way. And we did not have enough emphasis on math, because our UIP, in addition to trust, was focused deeply on reading, where we did make strides. One of the most fundamental reasons was that in our fourth and fifth grade, we had several teachers that were not meeting our expectations around instructional effectiveness and classroom management. And so, one of the things I learned at my previous school as principal, where we received the Governor's Distinguished Improvement Award, was you have to get the right people on the bus and keep folks to be able to make a lasting impact and improve achievement. So, I want to share with you briefly some of the changes we've made since last June that we strongly feel are moving us forward in a direction that'll make you all proud come the end of the school year. While we retain the majority of our staff, and we're very content about that, we replaced four of the seven teachers that made up our fourth and fifth grade teams. And we recruited one of the best teachers I've had the opportunity to work with in my career to come to Adams 14. She's anchoring our fourth grade team this school year. And we attracted a number of new to the profession, but outstandingly talented teachers. And so, the difference we're seeing there is very noticeable day-to-day, whenever we visit fourth and fifth grade classrooms. Teams have also greatly improved in terms of collaboration. One of the two key aspects of our UIP this year was around teams collaborating weekly, analyzing data, creating assessments together, effectively implementing benchmark. And that work this year has been with one of us present at every session, as well as our coach there as well. So that, that weekly collaboration is fundamentally different than what happened in years past. And there's not only now the trust there, but there's the cohesive teamwork that we didn't see as much in previous years. Out of the Better Schools work we did with the grant last spring with our teacher leaders, we came together as a staff in August and really unified around our instructional focus, around higher-level questioning and comprehension skills and balanced literacy. Having that unity of staff, and the staff all having a voice on what we're going to focus on, we've seen make a tremendous difference this year in terms of their excitement and buy-in to everything we do around their professional development. And as a whole, we're just really content and proud. We have a much more student-centered staff this year, and they, they get along with each other fantastically. So, the other piece, final piece to share is that our weekly observations in those areas of fourth and fifth grade where we had data that concerned us, the new teams, what we see day-to-day anecdotally on an instructional level is, you know, let's say out of 10, out of kind of six to eight level consistently in student engagement and in terms of their instruction and their effectiveness, compared to the previous year around this time, where it was not, it was on average in the kind of two to five area in terms of effectiveness. So, we are optimistic based on the new teams and really high-quality teams across the board. So moving forward, realizing that we have new staff that's new to the profession, as well as staff that's hungry to continue growing, and we want to keep them here in Adams 14. One key part of our work is, the two of us observe and debrief with every classroom teacher and specials and special ed teacher on a weekly basis. So every week, and with our veterans, it's every other week. That means 20 to 30 times in the year, teachers are getting feedback from us and growing. And I was used to maybe four or five times a year when I, myself, was a teacher or a principal in other districts. So, frequent feedback, we know, makes an impact on instructional growth. The other piece is empowering our teacher leaders. I also want to highlight our coach doing a lot of individualized and teamwork. So you'll see our teacher leaders who we meet with regularly, who are on that team that worked in Denver on the Better Schools Grant, they are working regularly with us to monitor our UIP. So every single month, we are looking at the UIP goals for that month and saying, where are we at? Where have we hit the goal, where are we falling short, and what do we need to do next? So that's something we're doing that we're particularly proud of. They help us develop top-notch professional development as well. So, we met with them this morning at 8:15. They have a voice in everything we're doing this Friday and onwards. And finally, they give us insight on instructional next steps. We feel like to move a school forward, it can't just be two people making all the decisions. There needs to be input from everyone. And teachers are in the classroom, knowing the challenges better than we do. So, we're really proud of the teamwork on that design team, as we call it. Next slide, please. So, in terms of fundamental question for us and to share with you is, what's different in 2016-17 that's going to lead to more effective results that we can all be proud of? And some of the major pieces are, in August, we went over with the staff a document we created in July that was about, what are the five elements of effective balanced literacy? We expect to see it in every classroom, every day. And so that really was a great educational experience for everyone to dive deep into those. We also have seen a really effective implementation of benchmark, and we're really grateful to all of you for the support you gave. Our teachers were really hungering for a consistent curriculum that they could use to support the standards. And finally, we have more than 75 students participating every day in targeted, small-group reading interventions. Next slide, please. One way that's happened, the two of us, when we came to Monaco, realized our paraprofessionals were hungering to work more hands-on with students. They were primarily running copies and doing other tasks that were not directly connected to students. Thanks to the great work Ms. Wolf and others have done, training our paraprofessionals, they now work with our students in small groups every single day. And that's one of the most fundamental parts of their job, is teaching our students in addition to all of our teachers. Our MTSS team also does a lot of work to support teachers coming up with ideas, teachers helping teachers essentially. And finally, our professional development is with a lot of fidelity focused on our UIP goals. We saw a lot of needs in previous years, and I'll be the first to say, we were focusing on trying to fill a lot of holes. This year, we're seeing the power of keeping our focus on those couple UIP goals in all the professional development work that we do. As I mentioned, last spring, we were honored with the opportunity to really grow and do critical work to lift our student achievement by doing the Better Schools Grant. During these work sessions, which were seven hours once a month for the last five months of the school year, last school year, in Denver, we took this team of teacher leaders. We analyzed how time was being used. We discovered how within our school, there was excess minutes of transition between subjects, a number of insights that were impacting student achievement in a negative way. We also looked strategically at how to maximize instructional time. And what grew out of that is our staff showed the increase in, I think, trust and collegiality. And our staff is now starting school 15 minutes earlier than last school year, which, which was a wonderful kind of victory for all of us out of that Denver work. And that team helped determine what was our focus for this school year academically. So you can see our big three goals, team instructional planning, weekly around the right things, data, creating assessments, talking about student work. Our efforts around higher-order thinking, and a lot of our professional development is teaching teachers to ask better, higher-level questions that push students to think and builds on our work from 2014 and 15 around fostering more student talk. We know students learn more when they're the ones doing the talk. And so that's a stride, and finally, engaging families continues to be our goal. And the insight that emerged from our work in Denver was, in the last two school years, we did a, I would say, a really wonderful job of engaging our families to make our school more welcome. It had not been a welcome place for most of our families, based on surveys we received when we arrived at Monaco two and a half years ago. That was a success, but where we were not doing enough was creating academic partnerships with families. So that became our primary goal this year. And I'll come back to that in our final slides in a moment. To tell you a little bit more about the instructional team planning that happens weekly, that's what they're doing as teams consistently, and we're holding them accountable for that on a regular basis, giving them feedback on how they're progressing, which we did with every team in December. How they're analyzing student data, how they're creating daily and weekly targets and objectives, the assessments that are going to be critical to know on a weekly and monthly basis, how are our students progressing? So we're not just waiting for a summative, end-of-year state test to tell us how things are. And we're actively monitoring that. So, this captures for you really the two branches of our school improvement plan, the planning part related to assessments and creating rubrics, and then our professional development work around best reading practices and higher-level questioning. Next slide, please. Opportunities beyond the classroom. Even though we do not have a 21st century grant, we're doing everything we can to provide enrichment experiences for our students. And teachers are stepping forward, as well as this past week in, in meeting with parents. Many parents want to lead enrichment clubs this second semester. Celebrate the Beat, we have 40 to 50 students over the course of these last several months, practicing weekly, third through fifth grade. We have a STEAM club that I heard kids behind me in the hallway this afternoon with excitement saying, hey, can't wait to go to STEAM club. Spanish club and art club this semester as well. And we are additionally doing tutoring across four different grade levels, targeting the students who need it the most. And this spring, as a tradition in its third year, our fifth graders for two and a half days will go to Cowood Outdoor Educational Center and tie their science learning to some hands-on experiential learning and see how science plays out in the real world, and what jobs can grow out of learning more about science. So, finally, we wanted to share with you, the other key goal we said was engaging families, and really moving from the events that bring parents in to genuinely building academic partnerships so they can support their children at home with learning. We held an event that was really a delight and success. More than 30 parents coming to learn about how to be more effective teachers of reading at home with their children. That was just about two months ago. Twice a month, I meet with a group of our parent leaders, and all parents that are welcome. It's guacamole with gerson, and then two weeks later, our PTO. And we're always getting their ideas and suggestions, and really answering their, their tough questions about what are we doing as a staff to move the school continuously to new horizons. new horizons? And finally, I believe in regular, consistent communication. And what I've learned over the last two and a half years at Monaco is our families most appreciate regular communication from me on behalf of our school by phone. So every single week, I'd say for the last eight months excluding the summer, calls on, on what we're proud of, what we're working on, how they can help us. And I've seen those weekly phone calls really make a big impact. We also are doing reading contests that involve parents helping their children over the different vacations because as Malcolm Gladwell and other folks' research has shown, it's often vacations, especially summer, where our students who are making some strides then lose a step or two. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen. And a family reading night that we hosted a few weeks back and it was wonderful turnout. We're really grateful. We had a number of students from Adam City High School come over and do a dramatic read aloud for many of our families. And then there are activities in the classroom for, for students and families. One of our traditions, we started a couple of years ago to really honor students advancing in their character around our five traits of care, collaboration, grit, personal best, and zest, as well as students who are making academic strides, is breakfast of champions. First Friday of pretty much every month of the school year, we hope you can come and join one Friday because it's truly inspiring as we honor 25 students who their teachers have nominated and often the whole class is nominated. And our parents are there in big numbers. And by the time the school year is over, we've honored 200 students over those eight months. So I want to, I want to thank you. I also want to, want to say tonight was a beautiful example and Ms. Colber, our music teacher, is the, the success story and reason behind this. We had our second grade music concert. Students were singing in four different languages, preparing them for our global world. And it was moving to see, we had, I counted, we had more than 130 family members in the audience. And this is not a school-wide event, this is just second grade, coming out to support her great work and what our students and their teachers are doing. So I think that's an example. That's not something we, we put into UIP necessarily, but it's a, it's a sign of how much our families care about the learning their children are doing at our school and how our efforts to make them feel more welcome and embraced are really coming to life. So with that, I want to really thank you for this opportunity for us to share some of the strides and some of the challenges in what we're doing to keep Monaco moving forward.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is any of your activities on Channel 8, which y'all do in Monaco, so everybody else can see what you're doing besides just if you go to the website? Is it running consistently on Channel 8? So a lot of people do look at Channel 8 and, oh, Monaco is doing this or guacamole with gerson.
Yeah.
Is any of this stuff happening on Channel 8 that you know of?
No, and I think that, that would be a great next step because it would be an opportunity for some of our family and community members to see more of some of the inspiring things that happen. So that, I think that's a, Janelle and I have monthly meetings and we'll, we'll talk about at our next meeting, how we, how we could make that happen and which events would be the, the most effective ones to do that for.
Thank you.
Thanks for the suggestion.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. First of all, thank you. Thank you for all you're doing for your school. Thank you for involving the students. Thank you for involving the parents. And thank you, teachers, for all being involved. It's, uh, it's impressive when I hear collaboration going on within the school itself because a lot of times people are dictated, this is what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and just like it, you know? And, and for you to meet with your, with your staff on a weekly basis is tremendous. You know, the parents probably do enjoy the phone calls coming from you to let, let them know what's happening. That's why you have 130 parents in the audience at a second grade event, you know? It's a, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. And yeah, and as I said, you know, our, our, our teams have really turned a corner this year in terms of how cohesive they are and focused around the right things. And I, and I can say equally, last year, we, with a number of teams, that was a challenge and a struggle. So we're, I think, we're very optimistic about the impact our teams being more collaborative is going to make in terms of student learning, which is what it's all about. So we're definitely hopeful about that.
I just had one question. We heard earlier about the importance of having consistency in our, in our teachers. And can you just give me like a round number? What, what do you feel, how many of your staff will be returning next year?
Yeah. And because for us, it's critical. We, we have all these talented, especially young teachers. 10 of our 20 classroom teachers are in the first three years of teaching. We want them to continue to become stars and stay in the district. So my hope, especially because they're happier in their teams and there's a lot of other things that are more positive, that we would retain, I think our goal would be around retaining 80 to 90% of our, of our teachers, which would be a step forward in terms of district and school rates from, from past years. And I think, I think, you know, events like tonight's music concert and the teachers from that grade level being there, those are inspiring and, and remind us all of, of the purpose this work. So I, yeah, I would say that that's, that's our hope, if we can continue over the next four months to build on the positive momentum from the-
I commend you on those efforts. Great.
Just like to say thank you and thank your staff for all the hard work because that's what keeps our kids in school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pass that along to them tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks. Just one thing, Dr. Abrego, can you remind your principals that when they make a presentation, if they're going to have handouts, that they-
Right.
-give it to us on Friday? Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Another report for the superintendent. We have the facility naming committee that wants to give us a little bit of information.
President Rola, Vice President Quintana, who's absent today, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Abrego, good evening. About a year ago, following the untimely death of Adam City High School's swim coach and teacher, Joe Cisneros, the board received a request to have the high school swimming pool officially named in memory of Mr. Cisneros. You all actually have a policy that addresses that. And the board launched that process examining and vetting the proposal through a community committee, members of which are here in front of you, and using feedback solicited from the community at large. You should be very proud of the facility naming committee as these individuals have shown great care and dedication to the district and Adam City High School in particular. They've been very thoughtful, deliberators, and engaged listeners to their community peers throughout this process. They've dedicated a lot of time, meeting, reading, researching, and talking with others about the proposal you gave them. I'm pleased to turn the podium over to the group's chairman, Mr. Andrew Amador. He will represent the committee in tonight's presentation. Mr. Amador.
Thank you for, thank you for your time tonight, President Rola, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Abrego. First and foremost, I want to introduce a couple of the committee members, the vice chair, Laramie Reese, and also Maria Zubia, another committee member. We're going to go through a real brief presentation. The presentation consists in three parts. One of process, two about the improvements to the existing policy, and then three, what are the next steps? So thank you again. On January of 2016, the Board of Education requ- got a request for the naming of the Adam City High School Swimming Pool to be Joe Cisneros. There was a board policy in policy FF and F-dash RR to create a naming process. In February of 2016, the board took action. The board then recruited a naming committee consisting of teachers, staff, community members that are out there in 2016. The appointment of the committee is a three-year term. And the facility naming committee voted myself as the chairman of the committee. So I'm taking my city council hat off and putting my naming, facility naming committee hat, chair on. And the vice chair is Laramie Reese, a staff member of the school district. A little more about what we went through. After we got organized, we set some operational procedures guided by ourselves. We reviewed the policy that the school board has for the naming of facilities. We see it set timelines. We set a plan to get community input and we also set the dates for decision-making for the presentation tonight. The significance of Joe Cisneros to the Adams 14 School District, Adam City High School, and the swimming community was very important to everyone on our committee and also to community members. In the process, there were public input meetings in the form of two of them, one during the week and then one on Saturdays. What we heard that the community echoed the same sentiment that we had for Joe Cisneros, so the late Joe Cisneros. We received 22 comments over the duration of the two meetings. And the community came out from students, community members, and parents. And lastly, about the process, well, we're moving in the process now, so I'll just stop there. So starting in the process, we, the committee reviewed the policy that the school board had. And we have some recommendations for improvements of what that is. We vetted the proposals and the committee recommends the approval of the Adam City High School Swimming Pool to be Joe Cisneros Swimming Pool. So that is our recommendation to the Board of Education. A little bit about the policy that we reviewed. We worked many hours, not only in our committee, but also outside of the committee, trying to gather information. And I do want to thank the school district staff for helping pull together some of the information that was inaccessible, at least to myself or maybe some of the staff in general. So I do want to thank staff there. And what we found was the board policy was pretty vague with everything that came back to us. And based on the committee's experience, we decided to make some improvements. First and foremost, the committee policy recommends seven committee members. And we're requesting to reduce that to five based on community input and finding members that would regularly participate in our meetings. We suggest some clarifications to the criteria for supporting a proposal. We are asking to clarify that the process is not an election, but rather a consideration of the proposal. We really did follow into this, setting a one-year cycle for consideration of any naming facility. That way, it wouldn't be a burden to the Board of Education and consistently getting requests for renaming facilities or naming facilities or whatever that might look like. So a yearly cycle on that. And then we also looked at, in the policy, the improvement of avoid making changes to many facilities. And so what we heard through some of our discussion with not only our committee members, but also some of the community members, was that they wanted to start naming different facilities and baseball fields and swimming pools and all. I mean, it went a little rogue. So I think in the improvements for the policy, that's where we ended up. And so you'll see that in the policy. That being said, I believe we codify the process for consistency on a yearly basis. We preserve the process over time. That way, what we found was that we could, we had the challenge trying to find a process and policy that was actually set in stone. So we're here to solidify that for you as one of the action items of our, our committee. And we've also incorporated an exhibit of what the survey should look like. So we ended up making improvements and almost making it up entirely as we went down the road. And so I'll take a short pause there, but the next steps for the Board of Education would be to have a public hearing in February. The board to consider the public hearing, what you hear there in March, and then take action in late March. And then if approved, what, the naming of the Joe Cisneros Adam City High School Swimming Pool, we would set as the committee ourselves, a celebration in April. And so we were working a calendar backwards just to make sure that we're not impeding finals for students. So we know that student achievement is most important, but we also know that some of the seniors graduate early and they may check out. So we're still working on what the date of the celebration is. That being said, I want to thank you for your time and if you have any questions.
Any questions? I just, I have a couple probably, Mr. Amador, is did you really put it out to the community? What ways that you put it out? And the reason I'm saying this, because when that school was first open, I had a group of people approach me about naming the swimming pool. And I'm sure these were your teachers, Wes Cook and John Ruby. And I, I said, well, that's not up to me. You have to go up and make your presentations. Did, did that group ever get a, meet with you and, and make their presentations? Because I don't want them coming back, well, we didn't know about it. I just want to make sure that it was put out there so that they know that they had the opportunity to come and make their presentation.
I appreciate your question. So to answer it, the way that the naming facility advertised, we advertised through social media, through Facebook. There are numerous different social medias for us. It did go out in the Commerce City Sentinel. So it was advertised in the, I'm not going to call it a newspaper, but the Commerce City Sentinel, that is a publication that goes out throughout the city. There were flyers put out and handed out. There were signs at community venues, i.e. some of the city facilities, the Commerce City Recreation Center, the Mi Pueblo, some of the supermarkets, those types of venues where people could see that. The school district website, Adams 14 School District website did have it on their website and Channel 8. So those were some of the ways that we tried to get community input, to answer your question.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one more, short one, if you don't mind. It's on Beyond Textbooks. And for the board members, I did give you some information on the folder. You're going to have some written information on some of the things I'm going to be talking about. But first thing, on my presentation, Beyond Textbooks, what is Beyond Textbooks? And Beyond Textbooks is a curriculum framework. And really basically does, it integrates technology and instruction, so they complement each other. The implementation of Beyond Textbooks supports the instructional technology by providing teachers with pre-developed, teacher-approved lesson plans and resources that help make the incorporation of technology into instruction more seamless. Basically, what it's going to do, it's going to make our teachers' jobs easier. And just a little bit more specific is the instructional framework supports teachers in this way. Beyond Textbook will provide the district with a curriculum calendar. That curriculum calendar will tell a teacher what standard to teach because some standards are, are more important than others and they have much more importance on the part test. So it will tell the teachers what standard to teach, what's important. It also tells them when to teach a standard. If you look on our, on the calendar, for example, if they're doing standard one, it may tell all third-grade teachers, teach standard one in August. It also tells them for how long to teach it. It'll tell them, teach it for three weeks, or it's a suggestion, this standard should be taught for approximately three weeks. And then the most important thing is, and this is very critical because when we're teaching standards, we're not quite sure if, some students pick it up and some do not. So Beyond Textbooks has a very quick assessment. It's five questions that you ask the students after you teach a standard. It's five questions that you ask the students after you teach a standard. If students can answer four of the questions correctly, that means they have mastered the standard because they have eighty percent proficiency. If they do not, then they have to go into a reteach block. So, that's going to be very important for us, for Beyond Textbooks when we pilot it, but it will address the needs of all our students because there'll be that thirty-minute block to help the kids that are either ahead or behind by having them go into a reteach or an enrichment block. So, that's what we're trying to do and if you really want to know what Beyond Textbooks is, we have invited them to do a presentation for our district tomorrow at seven-thirty in this boardroom. They're going to be doing it for our elementary teachers. At two forty-five, they're going to be doing it for our high school teachers. They came in earlier and they did a presentation for our principals and our principal said, "Dr. Bregel, this is exciting. We want this, we want this." And I said, "Let's take a step back because we don't want to implement something into the district unless we have buy-in from our teachers." So, that's why we're going to have the presentation tomorrow. Now, if our teachers buy in and they want to do this, then hopefully we will bring that framework, Beyond Textbooks, to our district. If we do bring it into our district, what we want to do is, we want to help our, some of our schools that are low performing. As you know, our high school is already year five. Some of our other schools are getting close to year five, so we want to help them. So, if we bring this program in, we're going to hope to bring it into Central Elementary and Rose Hill Elementary for K-5. And then, when we were thinking about it, we said, "Well, if we're going to do this presentation for teachers, the Central kids and the Rose Hill are going to be going to Kearney as sixth graders." So, we have two other fifth grade classes, the ones from Hanson and Kemp, and we thought, "Well, let's invite those teachers to this meeting tomorrow because if they would want to be a pilot for this program, we could also include them." The purpose being, when all these students go to sixth grade, they will all be at the same level with the technology and the Beyond Textbooks. And basically, what the technology will be is, we want to have our students have the one-to-one Chromebook. That would be, starting at third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and again, when they move on to the sixth grade, we would start implementing it at the sixth grade and the middle schools. And again, it would all depend on if the program is going to be a success if we continue it, but we definitely want to pilot it. And then, we also had some high school principals, their administrators, and we said the same thing. We were thinking about implementing it with our ninth graders, the current eighth graders, and said, "Let's pilot this program and see if it works." And they sort of wanted to go to another level and they said, "Well, Dr. Bregel, let's present to our staff and let us come back to you and think, maybe want to do it more than just a ninth grader." So, they may want to do it for the tenth graders also. And again, we're not telling them if they have to do it or not, they're going to decide and let us know and then we're going to come together on a good plan. But, this is a very good program that has been very successful in other districts. It's not a company coming in, it's a school district sharing the best that they do with their students. It's worked. They're a top-performing district and the, this Beyond Textbooks is, would be, we would be the first school district in Colorado to implement this. They have partnerships with Arizona, California, Wyoming, hopefully will be Colorado, Alaska, and one other state. But, it's, we're just trying to think out of the box and bring initiatives to our district that are in need because we have to come up with a plan to improve our district and we just feel that this is going to be one resource that would benefit our teachers, make their jobs easier, and also elevate student achievement. That's Beyond Textbooks.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Joe. The two elementary schools were Central and what was the other?
Rose Hill.
So, both those schools feed into Kearney. Why don't, why don't you have one that from, for Adam City Middle?
Oh, it's the pilot program. Again, we want to make sure that it works and we want to make sure that we're helping the schools that are most in need. If it were to be successful and we moved into the element, middle school grades and we see our scores going up, then of course, we're going to talk to other schools and say, "This is probably be a good program for Adams Middle School." But, we're taking it as a pilot. We want to make sure it works, we want to make sure that teachers, you know, know how to use it, will use it correctly, and it's working. And if it does, I mean, it could be implemented in the whole district if it's going to help us improve academic achievement. So, that's the plan. Start small, if we can go big after we run some data.
So, when, when do you plan on starting this? Is it beginning of next school year?
Yes, it would be at the beginning of the next school year, in August, we would have our teachers ready. That means some of the training would probably take place this semester, right now.
I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money for a pilot program.
It is, but it's, what are you going to get for your money? I mean, we have to do something different here. I think we're lacking in technology in our district, so this is a new way to help our students grow and to just take learning out of the classroom and expand it to the, I mean, everywhere. The million dollars that I think is coming up is not necessarily for just this portion right here. This portion, I would say, would probably be closer to five hundred thousand and then the other portion that we're talking about curriculum would be the money's put into the curriculum and instruction account to support all of our schools. Like you said, if it, if it works for here, can we help the other schools? Yes, we can, as long as we have the funds in the right place, we can, we can do that.
So, I have a question. So, in your best estimate, when would we see progress?
When will we see progress? Well, you have to implement the program. I would say after the first year. I've worked with this program before. After the first year, you see progress. By the second year, you see vast improvements. And by this, I'm saying, I've worked with this program in various districts. In one district, it elevated our, our school's district from a D to an A in two years. In another district I was in, we weren't even on the radar in the state, there's two-hundred-and-fifty districts. We moved up to fifteen within two years, so. But, it really all depends on the fidelity. I mean, I can't tell you because number one is the teachers have to want it, two, they have to implement it with fidelity, and we're talking about the cost. The cost for Beyond Textbooks is actually only ten dollars per student, which is not very much. The cost that is, is, is more on the budget is when we start purchasing all the one-to-one Chromebooks for the students because that's our part of our district that we're doing that. But, the actual program is not that expensive, but we have to continue with the professional development and so forth. But, I can't guarantee, but I would say after one year, you would see progress and then we would know if we would have to move it on to other schools. And of course, if we're showing positive growth, that would be something that we would want to do.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Harvey, senti.
I mean, Dr. Bregel, you gave us two sheets of paper.
Yeah, and, and this was just-
And you're asking this board to approve something that I don't feel justified, to my personal opinion, is adequate enough for me to say yes or no.
And, and if I could interrupt, Mr. Thomas, I just gave you a quick synopsis of Beyond Textbooks. When we get into the part where you're going, where we're going to ask for you to approve certain funds, you know, I can elaborate a little bit more on the curriculum and instruction. But, that was just some of the talking points that I was going to use here today so that as I was speaking, you could follow along.
I do have, I think if we're going to do it at Central and Rose Hill, there should be no question asked at Kemp and Hanson for the fifth graders, because they're both going to be going up to Kearney in a year and they should know, you can't have half the students know this thing and if we're going to continue to work it up and then this other half, because now we're just a year behind with that other group. So, if we're going to do it, I think the fifth graders from the other two schools have to be involved. And I also believe that you had said somewhere down the line that if a student transfers from one school to another that is doing this pilot or that's doing this program, they should be able to be right, be able to sit down and-
It's a very consistent curriculum. If you're a third grade teacher in August teaching Standard One, that means if we're following this program, a third grade teacher at, for example, right now, Central is doing the same lesson, same standard, and Rose Hill is going to do the same standard. If we bring these two fifth grade classes in, they'll all be consistent, they'll be consistent throughout the whole district. So, if I were to walk around to the school and if I see, maybe I'm going there in December and this third grade teacher's teaching Standard Number Six, they should all be doing that. So, we have consistency throughout our district, which is very important because, I mean, that's what we're trying to get. And I do agree with you, Mr. Rolle, that if we're going to do it with the fifth graders, we want them all because when we run our data, we want it to be true data. That means every single student will have been experienced to Beyond Textbooks at fifth grade and now we know at sixth grade, when we run our data after that year, whether it's true or not.
So, is the Dupont office up in Monaco? How come they not?
Okay, again, we're piloting because we want to make sure that we try it and we want to make sure that it is working, working correctly. Again, we're going to be spending a lot of money, so we want to make sure we do it little by little and then if the data supports that this is a good program and it's going well, then we will increase it into the other schools. As I said, it could be throughout the whole district, but not in its first year of implementation. This would be a plan to bring schools in little by little.
My final question is, we're bringing it in, we're going to pilot, we're going to work. Once we get it going, how long are we going to stay with it? Because I'll tell you what, this school district has the very bad habit of bringing something in. We're doing it and it doesn't work in a year or two and then we dish it out. I mean, nothing, there's, I have never seen data that says you can get things going in two years. It takes three, four, five, five years. I mean, are we going to stay with it or are we just going to say, "Well, it didn't work at Central and Rose Hill, let's just kick it out?" Or are we going to experiment, see why didn't it work? If it's working in Arizona and California and all these, why isn't it working here?
And it, and it will work here if you do it with fidelity and that's probably the biggest, you know, component of the, the program, any program, you have to do it with fidelity. But, Mr. Rolle, you're asking how long it's going to stay here? I, I think it would really benefit the board if you were to come in and see it because if you see the program, I don't know why you would ever want to get rid of it. As a teacher, if I'm teaching a class, it told me what standard to teach. Now, that's very important, correct? It also told me how long. It gave me, if I'm teaching Standard, five different lessons, which is, that's the hard part for a teacher. How do I teach this standard? So, it gives you five different lessons or six and again, if our students have the Chromebooks, then you have another multiple lessons on links that you can use. So, that's the hardest part for a teacher is, is getting your lesson plan ready and how to present it. Once you do your lesson, if you thought you had a great lesson, you upload it and now I'm sharing my lesson with maybe a thousand third grade teachers. And maybe if I didn't like the five lessons that they gave me, I could choose from probably two, three hundred lessons. So, for, as for a teacher, all this is doing is simplifying your day and that's why the high school asked me to bring the gentleman in again and they want to do it, but it's, it concentrates on math, English, social studies, science, and even a PE teacher. If you want to do some lessons, you just click, click, click. So, it's taking a lot of your lesson planning work from your school day because I've seen teachers here on Saturdays from eight in the morning to three o'clock. You don't have to do that if, if everything is there for you and that's what they're trying to figure out right now. I'm teaching a standard, they've got to spend hours and hours and hours trying to get resources when this is already done for you. It's, it's a, this district has been doing this for the past fifteen, sixteen years, so they have a very large research department, it's a district, and they figure everything out for you. So, it's a, it's a good partnership. Again, I think if you come to the presentation and you see how easy it makes a teacher's jobs, you would wonder, whether you use Beyond Textbook or not, all teachers should be doing that. So, it's just a good, a very good framework and it just gives you a lot of support.
And, did you say the first time is seven-thirty or seven tomorrow?
Seven-thirty here in the morning. They'll, they'll be doing the presentation. If you can't get to that one, I would really hope that if you wanted to see it, you have another option at two forty-five at the high school. And they're excited. I mean, the high school said, "Bring it in." And I go, "I cannot bring it in until your teachers view it and you have that buy-in because it would not do me any good to bring it in if they're not going to support it one-hundred percent and do it fidelity." So, that's why we're doing these presentations and if they're successful and the schools want it, then we'll move forward.
So, how were you decided? If the teachers want it, are you going to have a vote or send out some kind of survey? Yes, no?
Yeah, I mean, they would have to have, I would say, the majority buying. We always like seventy percent, but, you know, I, I make them give me something in writing because that way I know that they want it.
What about support staff? To support all these computers and-
Well, two, two components. Beyond Textbook is going to provide us with a lot of professional development and I'm not going to lie to you, I have been talking to my technology director and I said, "You know, this is a great program," and she loved it, but I go, "Do you understand that it's going to change our departments, how we do things?" Because, you know, we're probably going to be distributing about a thousand Chromebooks in the first year of implementation, so her department is going to have to change where, you know, it's, it's how do you pass these out? What's the policy for the parents if they lose them? You know, we've got to have a department ready to, if I'm a student and, and my Chromebook goes down, I just have to take it into somewhere and get another one right away. So, she's already figuring that out and again, it's, it's going to be a big change, not just on the technology department, but also on the teachers because, you know, it's just changing the way you teach.
Can we talk to someone from technology?
Sure, I, I have Ms. Teresa Hernandez and she's been helping me a lot because she's been taking the lead role as far as getting the gentleman from Arizona here. So, Teresa, can you give us-
What's your thought on all this? Can we do it as a district with your staff?
We can. So, you know, as Dr. Bregel said, he asked me months ago, you know, "Just take a look at this program, look at it through the lens." Having been an educator myself, spent a lot of time in years as a teacher, come up through the ranks here and, and working in a couple of central office and whatnot, and so I evaluated the program from the perspective of my instructional background as well as through the lens of operations here, running the district. And I was very impressed with all of the different things that have come into the district in the short four years that I've been here and in the districts that I've been in previously. This is a really nice package and as an educator, all of the tools that I need are in one place. And even some of the things that we've brought in, Mr. Rolle, you alluded to this, the last, you know, four years here that haven't stayed with us, they're all within one comprehensive package. So, we are going with a one-to-one, starting small with grades three, four, and five. And we're looking to really utilize the resources that we have, the technicians that we have, and then the warranty packages that we buy with the Chromebooks to be able to support that component. We've been working with the high school to identify how can we set up internships. The board sponsored two young individuals that helped my department last summer and it was tremendous. We were able to roll out somewhere between eight hundred to a thousand Chromebooks with the help of two children from the high school. So, we're looking at internships, we're looking at paid positions potentially, setting up a mini-type geek squad where we can have students earning internship credits and they're stationed at the school, just helping teachers do those quick little things because Chromebooks really come pretty much out of the box, ready to go. There's not a lot of complexity with that particular device, which helps us in being able to facilitate this type of implementation.
How about the, are buildings wired for all this? I mean, can we handle that many books?
Yes, we can, from the wireless standpoint. So, part of the funding that the board allocated to my department last year, we went back through all the schools and we used E-rate, E-rate funding in combination with that and added additional wireless access points to every classroom in our schools. In addition to that, we've been working on E-rate funding that's given us switches which enable us to be able to power more of those wireless access points. The component that we reviewed last year when we considered a one-to-one implementation for the district was regarding the, the actual electricity, given so many of our buildings are so old. So, at that time, we worked with the operations department, Mr. Weber, and a quick analysis of the electricity in the building would be that it would be possible and we're not worried about starting any fires.
What happened to the event that the power goes out? Then what happens?
So, Chromebooks are on a charging cart. We're going to start with carts in our buildings as opposed to having children taking them back and forth from home and whatnot and, and having to do the charging and whatnot. So, they will carry about a six-hour charge for each device and if the cart plugs into the wall and each time the children aren't using the device, it goes back into the charging cart and rebuilds that charge. So, we'd be able to continue at least six hours and hope the power comes on before then.
And you're, sorry, I'm taking up all the time, but you're certain that your staff can get all these books ready for the new school year?
Yes. I, I had proposed to Dr. J that I would like to begin implement, implementation as soon as the spring to be able to, so I- So I have counted the number of students we have in current second grade classrooms and potentially if we move to the high school, the current eighth grade classrooms. And done several price quotations for him on, if we can get started now, we can potentially have all the first wave of Chromebooks ready to go, get teachers supported and trained and ready to go, and give children access and some exposure to those devices before they head into the next school year. And then we would do a second wave that would begin in August, so deploying fourth grade, set them up, deploy them, get the teachers comfortable, get the children comfortable, and then do a third wave where we would bring in for the fifth grade. So we wouldn't be deploying them all at once. We want to make sure that we get the devices out into the environment, get the users comfortable, and then be able to provide support to them and then move on to the next wave. So we would anticipate by January of 2018 to be fully implemented.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Got a question, Gedman?
Yes. Pilots, okay. You also have parents that want to be part of this. And we keep talking, building trust. Are you going to educate the parents as they come in, in perspective to, to how to utilize what their kids are learning? So that they can feel that they're part of the child also in the learning process? And maybe even helping the teacher as they get this stuff at home? And, and I think that, that the only factor is, is that to me is, if it's a million dollars, okay, or just in schools, what's the total price? And you're going to get this asked for the whole total implementation and then the maintenance of that on the yearly basis. And, but the most important part, and I think you guys can figure that out. But what I'm looking at is engaging the community so that you can build trust, not just with the teachers. And I think that, that would help you out quite a bit, because there's a lot of parents that are going to be coming in. And, and the economy changes as we look at what's coming. Especially with technology and the process of all the programs that we're trying to implement to make it better. So those are some of the questions that I think that, that you need to think then, to sit down and talk to the community and educate them on what, what the whole process is going to be. Thank you.
President Rola, may I respond?
Yeah.
So one point of clarification on the cost, the one million dollar.
Yeah, it's not a million, no, go ahead.
Okay. The one million, one million dollar cost is not just for the technology. To do grades three, four, five, and nine, it's right, I believe, closer to four hundred thousand dollars for the Chromebooks. And we would do need, and we've been talking about, what is the, because with a Chromebook, while you're buying a less expensive device now, the duration of how long that device will last is closer to three years. So we would need a three-year refresh cycle. The rest of, I believe, the one million dollar ask is related to the curriculum instruction department for other materials. And then to your point around the parent component, some of the pieces that we've discussed thus far have been during those waves and phases of implementation. The first one would be easily facilitated at registration. When students come in for their back-to-school events and whatnot, giving parents an opportunity, you know, have a lab set up in every classroom for the grades three, four, and five, because that's where they would be. Parents would have an opportunity to see what their children are doing with those devices. It would give teachers an opportunity to become comfortable with them. As some of that outreach for how we engage parents and share with them, this is what your children are doing with these devices in our schools.
Question, Teresa? How long do Chromebooks last? I mean, you know, if you buy a computer today, six months down the road, it's outdated.
So the beauty of Chromebooks is that they are cloud-based. So when we think about a desktop computer at our homes, we, you know, load software onto them and we really need that software to last a long time. But with the Chromebooks, everything is web-based, so the students are really working off a, a, a cloud-based environment where Word and PowerPoint and those types of software are. But a Chromebook is going to last you three years, and that's with us keeping them in charging carts and not having kids carrying them around and doing too much movement with them. The estimate that I prepared for Dr. Brigo at his request, I actually priced out touchscreen Chromebooks. You know, we talked last spring quite a bit about one-to-one initiative and which devices would make the most sense and really wanted to give our, give children the access to have multiple experiences. A touchscreen Chromebook opens up like a laptop, but they're able to touchscreen like a tablet or an iPad as well. So they're getting two experiences built in. And with that particular device, we're going to want to be certain that we're a little bit extra careful with those.
So I guess the first two years, so the cost is about four hundred thousand, correct? The first?
So if we, depending on how the board votes tonight on, on the appropriation piece, it's my hope that we would be able to use some of the funds from the current fiscal year to make the first initial wave and then use funds from the next fiscal year. So we're basically rolling across two fiscal years to accomplish this initial rollout, which is right around four hundred thousand dollars.
So I guess, Dr. Brigo, my question would be, how long are we going to decide? How many years or months or whatever, are we going to decide before we can put the rest of the district in?
I guess I would have to sit down with the technology department and, and figure out, you know, our funds. Because again, the funds that we're going to be asking for today, it's, it's, it's not just for technology, it's going to be for also other things. So it would all depend on how much we have in, in our, in our budget. Because, I mean, we, we could want this, but the funds have to support it.
One more final interest.
Go ahead.
We call it a pilot program. Pilot programs are bitter to the community. Because like Dave says, they have been hurt in the past. And it's not the parents, it's the kids that get hurt within those three, four years, okay, without full implementation. I think that if you start using words like, stop using words like pilot. It's, it's innovation that you're doing, because you're teaching kids how to utilize technology. And you're also teaching parents the importance of it. It's not, forget the past, you're looking at the future and then think future. My perspective is, hey, it's innovation, do something with the name so that it, it can be creative to the parents also. Just food for thought, I'm sorry.
One other comment I wanted to make, you asked about how we determined which particular schools to begin with. And the two elementary, specifically Central, will be entering year four of the state's accountability clock. So we have urgency around addressing the unique needs at Central Elementary School. And Rose Hill was initially selected because this year's school performance framework revealed that based on the last year's park results, that it is a turnaround school now. So we wanted to be able to provide urgent support through the, the program that Beyond Textbooks brings that addresses the common, commonalities between schools that are struggling. So those were some of the considerations that we had in selecting those particular schools. Monaco, which is also a turnaround school, is receiving support from, in a turnaround manner, from another avenue as well. So those schools are not being excluded, but these particular schools, while we're going to implement Beyond Textbooks, hopefully they're first, it's really addressing the urgency that we have with the instructional components of their programming.
Well, I guess my concern is, and I agree with Mr. Serna, is, you know, half our kids are getting this, the other half are not. And I think if we decide to go with it, I think we need to be all in district-wide for it, to be fair to our kids, because it is looking toward the future of our kids' technology.
So I think there's a lot to be learned. So I've done several case studies in examining one-to-one initiatives across the country. I think Los Angeles Unified would be the first to tell us to grow into a one-to-one initiative across the board. Because we need to be able to identify, and as we're shifting responsibilities and roles and how business is done in this new world of technology, we need to be thoughtful of that in that we don't just rip resources away from one to add on to another, but yet we have a transition for how we transition our resources and financially that as well. So if we went to a one-to-one and, and we worked, I keep looking at you, Mr. Thomas, because we spent a.
Here's last year, one-to-one you gave the board, you can reference to Mr. Drilling's question. How much we, you said, I believe it was a couple of million dollars to do the one-to-one and all those. So this was what you passed out to the board a year ago for one-to-one.
So is that what Mr. Dr. Brigo gave you this evening?
No, this is what you gave us a year ago, last year, for one-to-one with Mr. Drilling talking about.
Yep, and if I remember correctly, from a year ago, the total price tag was three point four million. How'd I do?
Ah, you did marvelous.
So we spent quite a bit of research time last year looking at what would a one-to-one initiative look like to do by fall, which would have been this current school year, buying seven thousand five hundred devices and implementing them. I believe the presentation that night was probably about forty-five minutes long with all the things that we would need to consider, from online safety to warranties to the cost to the refresh cycle. And then really thinking about, as technology ages, do we want to have in every three years, we're replacing seven thousand devices? Or every three years, we're rolling and replacing, you know, a thousand devices at a time, for example?
Well, the, the other concern is, every school has a different curriculum right now. So if we had a kid from OSUP go to Central, they're going to be lost using this Chromebook.
Not necessarily. So that's the, the beauty of what Beyond Textbooks brings to some degree is, there's educational technology, which is just the stuff. The whiteboard, the mouse, you know, the device and whatnot. And then there's the instruction happening. And what we want to get is that sweet spot down the middle where we have teachers who are instructing, using technology hand in hand, which would be your instructional technology. So what Beyond Textbooks does nicely is presents teachers with lessons that are already designed, have already been utilized, tried, tried and proven, that do that instructional technology component beautifully. And we've had our presenter show us some of those examples. So if you are able to come tomorrow, you could see some of those as well. But what we, what we'd want to have is the curriculum that currently exists in schools for literacy across elementaries is consistent right now. It's math, I believe that's not. But again, that's not my, my area.
Sure, but I think some of our scores are, are lowered because we don't, we're not teaching the same curriculum in each school.
That could be, I mean, I can be philosophical for you, if you'd like, from my own teaching experience, that the materials you put in front of a teacher are only going to be as effective as that teacher's pedagogical knowledge and experiences. So if I don't have the skills or the knowledge to teach, I don't know how to reach different learners and styles, the materials you put in front of me are meaningless.
Got a question, sir?
Well, so my name is Greg Allen, I work at Children's Hospital, a member of the community. The first thing I want to say is, awesome, outstanding report. My background is technology, I actually help install all the IT infrastructure for new facilities at Children's.
Can you step up to the mic, please?
I work at Children's Hospital as a program manager, and I install infrastructure and network systems for Children's Hospital. Her report is dead on. The thing she has not mentioned is that the cost of supporting, of supporting Chromebook is, is only going to go down and that the new devices coming out are smaller and cheaper. We're actually looking at one that's fifty dollars. And so this is absolutely the correct direction to go to. What I have not heard is, with the use of technology and the addition of the, all the supporting monies, what are you able to take away from? Because I, I get excited about children not having to carry hundred-pound books and the school district not having to pay for those books. So there's an opportunity for, for a return on investment. Could you speak a little bit about that, please?
So initially, as, as you've mentioned, it's the, the cost of textbooks indeed, as well as the cost of copying. You know, with our new copy system that came online this year, we're able to track and identify much more closely how much we're spending on toner and printing and copying. And as teachers utilize their Google Classroom, which is something that we funded from the work from last year as well, there are a lot less paper involved, a lot less copying, which is a lot of money. And I'm sure we can find those, those numbers as well for that. So some of the return on investment is immediately going to be in the paper products and the curriculum materials that we're buying annually as consumables, the workbooks that kids tear pages out and whatnot from there. But to answer your other question about essentially what goes away, so that we can support this, we are, that, that is going to be a struggle. Because just in the last year, as schools have been purchasing their own Chromebook labs, those labs are supported by our department and we've not been, you know, increased our FTE. One of the things we've done is we've reduced the amount of support provided in the ESS building. So folks here wait a little bit longer to have their tickets responded to, because we've, you know, allocated our resources out to schools to be able to support those needs a little bit more efficiently. But that is something that we'll have to look at, once we have a reality of, yes, we're moving toward this, this is what this will look like. This is the number of Chromebooks we're looking at. But Chromebooks, again, are, are very self-sufficient in that they're very simple devices. Our network is ready to go, that was prepared last year, so I think we can do this.
You mentioned earlier, is there going to be a tech after school or an apprentice?
So currently, we have four technicians that are allocated across our thirteen schools and then the warehouse area and ESS. And essentially, the high school, because it has the greatest number of users, has a tech, a full-time tech stationed there. And that tech also supports Hanson, which is right across the street. So what we'd like to do is continue to have our technicians split across the district, but then have the apprentices and the internships and the students that are learning valuable skills support those efforts. As a parent, my own child, as you can imagine, is kind of techie and nerdy, surprise, surprise, right? And he is running around his school all the time, helping teachers do different things. And I was a parent, I'm not completely crazy about that, because he's not in the classroom getting instruction. But this is something that our children, they yearn for, they know it's their lifeblood, they know technology. And so there's a lot of opportunity, even within the elementary schools, you know, for fifth graders to be supporting and helping, you know, the younger ones there as well. And it's not the kids who are going to need the support, it's the adults. And so, yeah, while we'd like to have one technician stationed at every campus, there will be a focus on ensuring that the one-to-one investment that we've made is supported first and foremost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We thought there was going to be a need for an executive session, but there is not. So Ms. Ortiz, you're free to go. Thank you for being patient. Moving on to routine items, consent items, personnel, personnel items. Need a motion to accept the personnel items that are presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Driling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to business. One point, one policy, need a recommendation for the approval to revise. Policy FF and FF dash RI revised, naming of facilities.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab, roll call, Monica.
It's first reading.
It's first reading, right?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Driling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to one point two, superintendent's recommendation, need a approval for policy FF dash E new, naming of facilities, committee input survey, discussion, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Driling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to two point O, grant. Two point one, need a motion for the approval to apply for adult education and family literacy grant.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Driling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to three point O, resolution, superintendent's recommendation, resolution number seventeen dash zero zero two, appropriation resolution.
So moved. Oh, no, we don't need it. Oh, it's a resolution, sorry.
Whereas the Board of Education and the administrative staff of Adams County School District fourteen of Adams County and the State of Colorado has duly adopted official budgets for the ensuing fiscal year beginning July one, twenty sixteen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, as required by law. And whereas the proposed fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen budgets were adopted June twenty eighth, twenty sixteen, whereas Colorado revised statute twenty-two dash forty-four dash one one zero provides that after the adoption of the budget, the Board of Education may review and change the budget with respect to both revenues and expenditures at any time prior to January thirty-one of the fiscal year for which the budget was adopted. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Adams County School District fourteen in Adams County and the State of Colorado, that the amended amounts in the following schedule be appropriated to each fund as specified in the amended adopted budget for the ensuing fiscal year. budget for the ensuing fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. You see the schedule on the screen before you. Adopted and approved this 24th day of January 2017.
Okay, I need a motion. Do you have something to say?
And I just, I'm not quite sure. Maybe Ms. Rotella could help me with this. Ms. Rotella, I know that we can only make changes to the budget at certain times. Is this the appropriate time where I ask the board for?
Yes, so what the, to just help refresh what we're doing tonight is you are setting an appropriation level for a spending threshold for the budget. And we discussed at the December board meeting, some of the variances, and it, I would be back to recommend those revisions. So in the general fund, you see it's $1 million and $48,000. And that's coming because we had some additional students from the School Finance Act. We talked about that and the averaging, and that we're actually collecting more money than the actual students we have. And then we talked about, we actually are getting about $770,000, which is one-time money from the abatement that's calculated through our property tax. So that makes up that $1 million. And I think Dr. Abrego would like to talk about how he would propose using that, but your action tonight is actually setting that legal threshold in order for the district to spend it regardless on what it's defined for. You can define that at any time. Tonight, you are setting a legal threshold, which the first column is what we established as the legal expenditure threshold back on June of 2016. And this would be to revise that to add $1 million for the general fund. So that's what you're doing by approving this appropriation tonight. Did that help with what we're doing?
And I just want to make sure that this was about $1 million that we weren't anticipating?
Yes, this is because of those additional students and that $700,000 from the property tax.
And you've heard about, you know, how, in my opinion, we just need to put money into curriculum instruction. In all the districts I've been in, a school district will always put money aside for curriculum instruction, and basically, it's to adopt textbooks, which usually cost a million dollars. But I, in our curriculum instruction fund right now, we don't have, I think we may have $300,000, and that money has all been appropriated. So if we're trying to move the district forward with technology and curriculum instruction, I was coming here to the board to saying that I think we have a good way to appropriate this money to curriculum instruction, then we can move the district forward with all the initiatives we talked about with Beyond Textbooks and having consistency in our standards and that. So it's money that we would have to improve academics in our district.
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Rotella. Just clear, so you're only asking for a million for your, for the project that we're talking about?
It's, no, no. I don't want you to misunderstand. It's $1 million to put in curriculum instruction. And that way, when important initiatives or strategies that we want to implement, that the instructional team says, this is a good thing, like we were talking about Beyond Textbooks, the funds would be there for us to move forward. And as you said, the more funds we have, the more schools we get an open to.
Well, I guess my point is the $48,000 to $45,000, what do we do with that? I mean, is that all going into that fund?
I would like to see it in the curriculum instruction fund.
The only comment I was going to make is, is that the $700,000 of that, I think it's $770-some thousand, that's one time. So it won't be here as we start planning for the next year's budget, which we're in that process of doing now. So it's important that we talk about that, which textbooks, technology-type items, they're kind of, not that they're one and done, but they're, they're good examples of what would be called a one-time expenditure, where you can make those expenditures, but I think realistically, you're never done making technology expenditures, but they're, they don't have an ongoing life like salaries and benefits tend to do.
Did I answer your question that you had?
Well, I'm, I mean, what do we do next year, is my question. If the money's not going to be there, what are we going to do?
Well, I mean, no matter what district you're in, you have to appropriate a certain amount of money for curriculum instruction, because usually, you have a textbook adoption cycle. That means we purchased, the benchmark was basically textbooks, but for English and language arts. Down the line, we're going to have to appropriate funds for a math adoption. Now, you can either have the choice of going math textbooks, or if we have the laptops, then really, that Chromebook is your social studies book, your math book, your English book, your science book. So you, we're trying to go in a different direction, where we're not spending a million dollars on the hard copy textbooks. We're taking you to another level. Mr. Achuleta, you were at that meeting with us at the conference, where the gentleman told us to think ahead, because we're trying to prepare our students for jobs that don't exist. So this is just one thing that we're trying to do to bring our district and help our students learn more about technology, preparing for life skills, the world of work, and so forth.
Well, according to Board Policy DBD, the minimum of 60% of district's resources should be allocated to district instructions. Did we spend 60% for Ms. Rotella for district instructions?
So I believe what that is referring to in the policy is what's considered and defined by the state law as instructional program costs. So that includes teacher salaries, the curriculum, it would be supplies and materials in the classroom. So I believe we are pretty close to our budget, is at, right around that 60% mark for direct instruction to our buildings.
Do you, I know this is-
So it's not just 60% of $60 million goes towards textbook curriculum. That is teachers' salaries, benefits, things that support the classroom and as they're defined by state law, what's considered instruction.
So you may not know this off the top of your head, but how much do we allocate every year for textbooks and replacement? And I know it's, we're supposed to every three years, but do you know-
I do know this, because it's, unfortunately, it's zero right now. I joined this district two years ago, and that was one of the questions that I asked. And that, we did a science, some FOS kits adoptions then. It was part of the START budget, as it was called back then. But there really hasn't been a formalized curriculum adoption budget for several years now. Some of our instructional folks from the past can help me. We used to call it, you know, where we really, we allowed the teachers, they had to go and kind of get their own curriculum for their classroom based on the standards. So we, we would define the standards, and then the curriculum was determined at the site levels. But I would say that was probably a weak spot we had. And I think that was discussed quite a bit last year during board meetings at all levels, the curriculum, which is why we purchased Benchmark this year, which we purchased 1.2 million out of this year's budget, but that came from your reserves. So once again, it's not inside the ongoing budget. You took that from your savings account in order to provide literacy K5 curriculum this But that is about the standard, $1 million if you're talking a textbook-type environment. And textbooks could be Chromebooks, or they could be paper, depending on where we're at in our, in our implementation process with that.
So we're getting more for our money this year if we did the Chromebook, because it has more books, per se, in the book, in the Chromebook.
I couldn't answer that. I am unfortunately not familiar with the Chromebooks and what they specifically can do, so someone would have to help me with that.
And really, if you bring on the Beyond Textbooks, the standards are there. So the standards are there. And I know we keep saying that there is no curriculum. The curriculum for Colorado is the Colorado academic standards. And it would have the standards, I mean, on the Chromebook, you can get for third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, every single grade. You could get support material for, if you're teaching math, social studies, science, everything is there. So as I'm saying, I'm just trying to identify weaknesses in our district. And when I saw that we did not have money for textbooks adoptions that I'm used to seeing at least a million dollars, I thought, this is a need, and this is a way to get us started.
Are there grants out there for this type of stuff?
There's all, there are probably grants for everything, and we do, I mean, we do tap into an awful lot of grants.
We have, don't we have a grant writer that could tell us?
We have multiple grant writers, but I mean, we do have a grant, a person that came on recently for federal programs. But, I mean, grants are written by all our staff. I think our special education department wrote a very big grant.
We don't have a specific writer.
But everyone helps with the grants here.
We don't, or we do?
We do, well, the program, the federal programs director that was just added on was more for compliance and supporting the entitled grants, Title I, Title II's, Title III's, and all the reporting requirements and the compliance that comes with that. I'm certain she'll write grants, but we used to have a grant writer a couple of years ago when I started. And the challenge with that is, is that the grant writer usually isn't the jack-of-all-trades, wouldn't know how to write maybe an operational-type grant and then flip to do an instructional grant. And so at that time, it was determined that wasn't the best use of our resources, and that position was eliminated, simply because people weren't getting what they needed. And I think the grant writer was struggling with their ability to adjust to the needs and not being an expert in all areas. So the grant writer in its formality went away a couple of years ago, and this is more the program side and being in compliance with all those requirements on the title grants.
Yeah, more?
Grant writing is in progress, okay? In perspective, Commerce City has reached the federal funding level of over 50,000 people in the city itself. So that qualifies Commerce City to assist in partnerships with their own districts, okay, to bring in funding for this type of stuff. And it's how you approach the county for support, how you approach the city for support, because all in all, Adams County wants to sell property to businesses. And the city has said it, the county has said it, is the competitive competitiveness out there for businesses to come into the county. And they're looking for ways to support education so it can go into their portfolio. Things that you're talking about right now, okay, is very essential to big businesses. Adams, Commerce City missed the propellers for this high-energy development on, and propellers, because of not having enough technology in process, okay? Big businesses that are going to become in Colorado, okay, want that technology base. And if it's in the educational districts, that's a selling point for the county and the city and the district to bring in more grants federally, state, county, towards the districts. And I think that you're pretty close to developing that. It's just how you get that partnerships with all those three elements. And it's a new way of doing things. We can't be separated in order to be competitive in Denver metro. That's just some advice that you have to take a look at, because it, there is funds that are available, but you have to apply with, let's say, powers of P to sign off on what you're trying to do with that grant, okay? And that usually works through your congressman, your senator, then your governor to help bring these things here. It's not just the district doing it alone anymore. It's getting too big, you know, in the technology process for our kids to get educated and to catch up. So this is just food for thought. My advice in this type of arena is how you bring in the city grant writer, the county grant writer, the district grant writer together to write you a program or competitive grant, so that you can receive some of these to implement. And I think that if you take a look at that, it works. So just food for thought again.
Any further? Okay, Sandy, that's good. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve resolution number 17 dash 002 appropriation resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, need again, need you now to read on resolution number 17 dash 003, authorizing the use of a proportion of beginning fund balance unauthorized by the Colorado statutes.
Whereas Senate Bill 03 dash 149 was passed in the legislative year 2003 to amend the school district budget law to ensure that any adopted budget as of July 1, 2003 or after shall provide, shall not provide for expenditures, inter-fund transfers, or reserves in excess of available revenues and beginning fund balances. And whereas if the budget includes the use of a beginning fund balance, the school district Board of Education shall adopt a resolution specifically authorizing the use of a portion of the beginning fund balance in the school district's budget. And whereas the general risk management nutrition services fee-supported and capital projects funds budgeted expenditure for fiscal year 2016-17 exceeded the anticipated revenues by $11,78,710, $615,080, $141,912, $44,964, and $5,969,400 respectively. And it is necessary to balance the budget by using these funds from the beginning fund balance for general risk management nutrition services fee-supported and capital projects fund expenditures. And whereas the purpose of the expenditures is to cover current operating expenditures and carryover projects from the 2015-16 budget. And whereas future-year budget adjustments will be recommended to the Board of Education to ensure that the use of beginning fund balance in the general risk management nutrition services fee-supported and capital projects fund will not lead to an ongoing deficit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Adams County School District 14 approves the use of the above-stated amounts of the beginning general risk management nutrition services fee-supported and capital projects fund balance to provide for the funding source for increased operating costs to be incurred in fiscal year 2016-17, carryover projects, with the provision that subsequent-year adjustments be made to assure that a deficit will not occur in these funds. Adopted and approved this 24th day of January 2017.
All right, I need a motion for the approval of resolution number 17 dash 03, authorizing the use of a portion of beginning fund balance as authorized by the Colorado statutes. So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to other, 4.1, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of the calendar change for school closure due to inclement weather on January 5, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing non-cred role call, Monica.
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryly?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 4.2, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of repair to Adams County School District 14 warehouse nutrition service building. So moved. Is there a second? Is there discussion?
Yes, was there other bids entertained on this?
Scott, if you could help us with that?
Yeah, I'll help you out with that. To my knowledge, we did have three vendors come and look at it. Two of them did not respond. The vendor that is listed here did respond with that number to provide the insurance company with a cost to repair that facility.
So what you're saying, Scott, is the- So what you're saying Scott is the insurance amount for nineteen thousand seventy-nine dollars is exactly what the garage doors estimated the repair to be?
That is correct.
Um, I'm sorry, but I haven't been around the block too many times, but I've never seen it be right on the dollar.
Um, that is, that is the proposal that was given to the, uh, insurance company, um, prior to winter break. Um, the insurance company at that time had, um, their adjuster did question the, uh, cost of that, had that, um, review with this vendor and accepted this price for the exact, uh, dollar amount that's on here.
So if I understand you right, garage doors came out and did an estimate and sent it to the insurance company?
That is correct.
So you really didn't get three vendors to come out and look at it then?
We did have three vendors come out and look at it. We had two that were non-responsive. One did show up, um, did not return with a number or fill out the vendor packet and the, uh, second one was no response at all, just told us they were going to be there and they did not show.
And this company's bonded, insured?
Uh, yes, that's part of the vendor packet, um, is to make sure that that company does meet the, uh, district requirements to work on property.
Uh, me personally, I'd like to see at least two more bids to make sure it's adequate.
Okay.
So I'm not going to vote yes on this.
All right. Um, we're, we're, uh, able to get that done, add, add three more bids to this, but in the meantime, um, just for record, this, this door has been damaged and been out of commission for a while and, and I'm not certain, um, what the requirements are going to be to reissue that check back to, uh, I guess we can reish, uh, hold the monies because it's made out to the school district, but, um, as far as the numbers coming up and down, what the, uh, return of that cost would be for the district to return funds back to that insurance company, I'm not sure what that process would be. If that makes sense, the insurance company of the vendor that hit our warehouse wrote the check to, uh, have this repaired. It's not coming out of district funds.
Two garage doors, correct?
It, the check is made out to Adams County School District to pay this vendor, um, that amount to have that repair made.
So if I hear you right Scott, the money's not coming from the district, it's coming from the insurance.
That's correct.
It's just like when you get in an auto wreck, they're...
That is correct.
And it's up to the company to demand how many, if the insurance is willing to pay for it.
Yeah, our insurance, uh, their insurance adjuster come out and argued the fact of what the cost was to have this done. Um, we showed them and told them exactly what we shared with you, that we had three vendors come out to give us a proposal so we knew what the damage would be to, uh, send into their insurance company, uh, their insurance company to, uh, make the repairs to the building after hitting it.
Hmm.
So there are no dollar amounts coming out of our district funds.
No, I, I under, I understand it, I just don't understand why if you didn't get response back from the two other vendors, why you didn't just call two more?
Um, somewhat of a timeline trying to get this repaired.
Well, it's been down six weeks and during that six weeks, I'm sure we could've got two more vendors or several garage door companies out there.
Well, it's more than garage doors. Um, we did have some framework that got damaged as well, um, with this process and turning it over to insurance once we had numbers, just because we had no idea what the numbers were going to be, uh, to get additional, uh, pricing on this. And, you know, whether it was, our understanding was that the insurance company would write the vendor, uh, directly, a, uh, uh, the funds to have this repaired, that it wouldn't go through our normal process because we weren't bidding it out for the school district repair on behalf of the school district because of something that was damaged by us, it was done by a third party and their insurance company.
Is this one of our approved vendors?
Uh, I don't know if it's an approved vendor yet. I do know that a vendor packet was turned in, um, whether or not they have met all the requirements, um, I have not heard yet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Nay.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Moving on to four point three, superintendent's recommendation, approval of in-state overnight field trip by Kemp Elementary, fifth grade students to Highlands Presbyterian Camp and Retreat in Allen's Park, Colorado on May eleventh, twelfth, two thousand and seventeen and their fundraising efforts.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we have roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to four point four, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen student calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to four point five, superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of an in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado by Monaco Elementary music teacher.
So moved. Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes. Is the individual in the audience?
Aye.
Aye. Um, if I'm not mistaken, it's saying January twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth?
That's correct.
And I'm assuming that the application to file for the conference is what, should've been what, September or something?
They have onsite registration.
Okay. And do you plan on coming back to get aboard what you learned?
I'm, if, if the board would like me to, I'd be more than happy to.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
So I, I have another question. So I'm kind of ignorant here, why do you have to pay your own food and lodging and daily expenses if this is a school district, um, thing?
So, um, I am requesting to use my music budget at Monaco Elementary to pay for the, uh, registration. And so in an effort to conserve as many funds as possible to use on materials and experiences for the students, um, at Monaco Elementary, just the bare things that I cannot afford on my own salary is what I want to use the money for. So just for the registration for the conference and then I do have a mileage request to get down to Colorado Springs and come back.
Is there anything we can do to, to help her out with money allocation for this, for since it's school and it's for the kids?
What is your, what is your overnight stay, do you know?
I'll be staying actually with a friend. So in order to save money, I'm staying with a friend who lives about forty-five minutes out from the Springs.
Forty-five minutes out?
Mm-hmm.
That's like being back here.
Less traffic. I don't have to take I-25. Um, so yeah, that's, that's my current plan is to stay with a friend.
I don't think it's fair that she pays her own, uh, food and other expenses. I think we need to, to up this, this four sixty-one seventy-four to at least six hundred. That would, that would help you with your food.
I won't say no to more money, ever.
Well, we're just trying to be fair to you. I mean, I, I don't think it's fair either. I, I agree with Mr. Archuleta, we have to increase it, uh, it's just a matter of how much to increase it.
Absolutely.
But it's not coming out the, um, her budget then, it's coming out another budget, is that correct? Not the school budget? Because it's saying it's coming out of Monaco Elementary school budget.
I, I don't know exactly where board members, but when we do allocate money, we're taking from somebody else, so we just have to figure that out.
So the amount that I have allocated is coming, like I said, from the Monaco music budget, um, based on the nineteen ninety-six referendum stuff.
Cause that's in the recommendation. So...
Well, I think we can afford a hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
That would, that would be fabulous.
Can I interject? She would have to get per diem rate per day of when she's gone. We can't just allocate a certain amount.
Okay.
Money. Her professional leave form should include daily per diems according to where she's traveling to and her professional leave that she submitted does not have a dollar amount, um, because she chose not to take those funds.
Do you have that form? Or who has that form?
In my office.
And I, and I think what we're doing right now, I think Mr. Rola, you were there, I mean, we're trying to educate everyone on the, uh, district's budget because we do have all the schools, I mean, they have besides this budget right here, your music, they also have other funds where they can put their monies wherever they feel, but it's, it's their prerogatives, we don't tell them where to do it. But we do want to make everyone know that when they're moving monies around in their budget, it's okay, but when you're, if we're allocating monies just from the general fund, you know, the general fund is, money is pretty much categorized in certain categories, so if we're going to be giving anyone money or, or the board is going to allocate money to anyone, it's going to come from somewhere. So we've just have to be careful in what we're doing because I know that we do want to help all our teachers, but I do want to let you know that their schools have funds, I mean, that, that they can support all their efforts of their teachers, but they are prioritizing on where they're, what, how they're spending their money.
If I may, um, based on the, the leave form, I know that there's been confusion. This is a conference that many of the music teachers in the district, um, have put in their leave forms to go to, and so there's been some confusion about, um, who's getting what from their school and who's getting what from their budget and things like that. So that might've, you know, contributed to some of the confusion, um, coming into that.
Yeah.
Uh, Monica, can she amend the form?
Um, yeah, she just won't get a check prior to her travel because it's this week.
Right.
She could amend her form at any time, prior to her submitting, um, her check requests.
Is that something you want to do or not?
She would just have to amend the form and get new signatures.
That, and that, that won't be a problem. Sure. I would, I would love to, and I'll, I'd love to explore, uh, how to figure out the rate of per diem. Um, and that would be great. Like I said, I'll never turn down money, I just appreciate the board entertaining the idea of letting me use my budget to go down there in the first place.
All we're talking about is just basically food, cause you're...
Right, exactly.
You're staying with a friend, so we're just talking about food for, for a couple of days.
Absolutely, yep.
I'm good.
So get with Monica, I guess, and...
Just give it to Monica.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We have roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to four point six, superintendent's recommendation, um, need a motion for the approval of an in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado for the state DECA Leadership Conference by Adams City High School, DECA students and sponsor.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have one.
In, in here it says that, uh, we're going to be transporting the kids on the bus, are, are they paying for the bus driver to stay at the hotel as well, or does the bus driver, driver have to pay their own?
I don't have the details, um, excuse me. Good evening, President Rola, um, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Bregel. I don't have the details on transportation, that works out different every time, depending on, um, the, the time of day, when they need to be picked up, or, um, sometimes they'll have a driver stay the night and we gotta pay for that out of our budget, or sometimes they'll just bring another driver down for the, for the, um, pickup. I know, um, last time we did this, it was up in Vail and, um, we had some problems with, um, the bus driver being able to get back up because of the snowstorm and so that kind of created some, um, some confusion there and some mess, but, um, usually Al's pretty good about, um, you know, doing what's best for the schools when it comes to, um, pickup and drop off. So looking at the, 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 um, uh, request, I don't know at this point, you know, how transportation's worked out.
So just in my mind, so we drive the kids down there, come all the way back, pay fuel, pay a driver overtime and then have another driver go back to pick them up and come all the way back again?
Whichever's cheapest, that's what they go with. So sometimes if they can't afford to keep the driver down there and it's cheaper to have them drop them off and come back, then they'll do that.
Wouldn't it be cheaper with the price of gas and overtime and everything just to have someone stay down there?
It depends on the, the mileage.
Come on.
I don't know. Al works that out, he does all, he puts all that together, I don't know.
You and I had a conversation here three months ago and I indicated to you that if you're going to come in front of this board, you better have your facts straight, okay? And he didn't do his homework, it sounds like. Okay, so we want to know who's going to pay and how it's going to work out because it does cost money.
I'll follow up on that.
Well, how mu, how long does it take to get to Colorado Springs by a bus? Two hours, two and a half hours?
Hour and thirty minutes.
On a good day with no traffic?
It all depends, I mean...
Can you just get Dr. Bregel some numbers, please?
Yes. Anything else?
I'm good, thank you, sorry.
All right.
Anything else? Uh, can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Um, or yes? Well, we, we need to put this on hold until we get some numbers, correct? I don't know if that's what you want, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to table it till next, next meeting, so it gives them time to get some numbers to Dr. Bregel.
Okay, there's a motion been made to table this, four point six, approval of in, in, of an in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado for the state DECA Leadership Conference by Adams City High School students and sponsors until further expenditures are met, correct? All right, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Is there discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Nay.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Uh, nay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yay.
Okay, so I guess we'll just table it until next weekend. Mr. Thomas, if you can just get some figures for us, I appreciate it.
Well, it failed, so it doesn't, it doesn't get tabled, Mr. Rola.
What'd you say? It fails.
It didn't, it doesn't get tabled.
It fails.
It failed because it didn't get tabled.
All right, so I'll re-propose it. Moving on to communications at this time. All right, under communications there, there's a need for...
Can I interrupt? I'm confused what just occurred.
We need to vote on the motion, we need to vote on that stuff.
Because...
There's a pending motion, there was a, a motion to table which failed.
The motion failed.
And there was a motion on the table.
All right, then we need a motion for...
For the kids to go back.
Motion for the approval of an in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado for the state DECA Leadership Conference by Adams City High School DECA students and sponsor.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we vote. Any discussion? Uh, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Dryling?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay. Now moving on to communications. Uh, at this time, we have been putting it off for a while, but I guess, uh, with half the year gone, there's a need for a board, uh, work session, professional development, uh, so day to work on, uh, evaluation forms and goals, et cetera. So what day would work best for everybody to be there?
Tuesday?
I don't have my calendar.
Tuesday?
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday?
Tuesday?
No.
Uh, planning commission next Tuesday.
Oh, that's the end of the month, that's the thirty-first.
Oh, thirty-first, yeah, I'll give you next Tuesday. Tuesday night?
Tuesday evening? Let's see here real quick. That'll be, uh, thirty-first? I can make it work. Okay, now, Mr. Bregel, how much time did you say we were going to need? Four hours, five hours?
I'd say the norm is usually four hours, half a day.
So we need, uh, four hours, so I don't know what time do we want? If we meet at five, we could be dismissed at nine, if we meet at six, we'd have to go... If we meet at six, we'd have to go up to ten, so it's up to, I don't have to work, so it doesn't matter to me, so.
Early is the best for me.
What's early enough for you?
What's early enough? Four o'clock? Can't do four.
Four thirty?
I can do five.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, did you get that, Monica? We'll have, the time will be next Tuesday, the thirty-first, at five o'clock. Okay, so then, um, please remember to view upcoming events and notice on the Adams fourteen website. Uh, (cough) nothing, Mr. Thompson, do you wanna communicate something?
Yes, please. Um, Mr. Storts, please. Thank you. You, um, forward, uh, procurement cards, um, receipts to Monica, to forward to the board. You've been doing this since I've been on the board. And my question to you is, do your team even look at the receipts, uh, what's been paid out? Or do they just receipts or anything? Do they even look what was purchased?
We do. Um, the main control, though, with the P cards is, you know, when you're, you use your card, and then, um, you're required to supply those receipts to your direct supervisor. So that's gonna be the person who's gonna sign off, review that receipt, and say that looks like an appropriate purchase. Then all of that gets funneled, you know, into us centrally. And at that point, um, our AP staff does review those receipts again to see if they are supporting the expenditure itself and if it's properly itemized.
Do your team, um, look at the, the board policy, uh, DBE about, uh, purchasing food and whatnot, um, section D?
Uh, yes. Is there a particular, uh, instance you want us to look into?
Um, if you look, uh, somebody goes to McDonald's and spend fifty-one dollars, I'm sure, uh, parents and students weren't involved in there. I know if you, the district is closed, um, Christmas Eve, somebody goes to King Supers and spend five hundred and thirty-six dollars. I'm sure it wasn't parents or students, um, with them, I assume, the day after Christmas. So there's, um, a lot of things that's been going on from August to today. There's, I mean, if the board set a policy, and, um, some, some people still abusing, I assume, abusing the policy, that's kinda irritating for me because we set up here to change it, to make this district go function correct. And to see somebody go to, um, Santiago's and spend ten dollars and see, spent this and this, um, it's kinda frustrating. Um, funds ain't been allocated correctly.
So, you know, what I would like to do is have the opportunity to go ahead and look into those, uh, instances you're bringing to our attention, and then, uh, you know, come back with a response to you about, um, you know, what that purchase was and how that fits within the policy, if it does.
Yeah. And, uh, could you provide, uh, the board, um, names of everybody in the district that has P cards? And what department they in, and how much is they limit?
Sure.
And, and, uh, next question is.
Can I, um, just add one more thing before we move to the next question? Um, when the board revised that policy, you did allow food for students or parent engagements. And I know that's what you're referencing. And one of our procedures is, is that the accounts payable staff is receiving, if it's, um, food for a class lesson, or the parents, they're either getting the agenda or a sign-in sheet, or the instructional plan that comes with that. Um, I actually learned about the Santiago's, um, receipt that you're just referring to. And Santiago's, when a school will call in an order, they will charge that order. And then when the stu, when the staff goes and picks that up, and would add a tip. And in this example, that ten dollars is the tip to that order. And it happened to be across, um, P card, um, months. I think one part of the transaction was in July, and the other part was in August. And I have shared that receipt with the superintendent's office to share with the board on that specific one, cuz I would ask that same question, um, when, when I was asked that question, what that could be. And so I just wanted to clarify that, that, um, the gate, which is the accounts payable, they do look at those expenditures, whether they're parent groups or student lesson plans. Or the other exception was the activity funds paying for foods, food products as well, so.
I, I would be interested to see, uh, cuz I'm gonna ask you to provide the board every receipt from last month for P card purchases. And we have a charge here at the corner store for fifty dollars.
Yeah, I don't see them, so I couldn't answer that.
Right, and I don't expect you to, but I'd like, I'd like you to provide the board by tomorrow a copy of all the receipts that go to these P card purchases in the month of December.
We will start copying first thing in the morning, and I will give an update to the superintendent's office. They're sometimes little receipts, so it, it might take us a little longer. I think noon was a goal, but it could take us a little longer. But know that we're gonna start first thing in the morning to make those copies for the December, um, P cards. We're happy to do that.
Thank you for your effort doing that. I know it's gonna take a little time.
And, uh, my next question is, you can take that. When you send us the accounts payables, in September, you had employees' names at a district. Now you going with employee vendor. What's, why's the change?
Uh, I think what you're seeing is there's a, there is a box, uh, you know, within that reporting software where you can elect to, uh, include that employee name or not include that employee name. And it looks like just with the one, one report, we have included that, and with the other one, we haven't. And I'll be honest, that, that was not an intentional switch on my part. Um, so it's, it's just when I'm running that report, if I'm, if I'm remembering to click that same box or not.
Cuz we had the names in September of the employees, of what was paid out to them. And then December, it's, it's changed, so I'm just questioning how come you changed, so, thank you. For the answer, so you will be changing it back, so we can see who's, who's.
Yeah, and I can reprovide that report if you'd like.
Thank you.
And, uh, we, we don't mean to be hard on you guys, but we get calls all the time from citizens and stuff, how the money's being spent, if we're watching our pennies, our dollars, and we wanna give them answers.
Yeah, and I commend you for that. I, you know, I think that's, um, you're doing your, um, you're taking your responsibility seriously, and we take our responsibility seriously too. And, uh, you know, I think when we look into these items, uh, I think we'll, we'll find that, uh, we are evaluating those to that board policy, and we've distributed that to that, uh, accounts payable department. And they're aware that they need to be looking at those charges when they come through to make sure, uh, you have allowed for that. Uh, I educate, uh, any new administrative personnel we get. Um, I meet with them personally, and I go over that policy as one of my key agenda items to say, uh, this is the way the board wants to see their money spent. So I do take that seriously too, and, um.
So what do you do in the case, Eddie, if someone doesn't provide you a receipt for an item?
Uh, an email is sent back to them to say, you know, we're, we're looking for that back at that point. Um, and we continue to follow up till we, till we don't get that. In the past, what we've done is we've then escalated that to, uh, the superintendent to say, you know, we're not getting that documentation. And, and these are some of those items which actually, uh, when we did have that audit, that, that was that list of things that you got, okay, in this case or in that case, we didn't, we didn't get them. But the procedure we've been following is to escalate that, and I think that's, that's what we'll continue to do.
So you escalate it up to Ms. Rotella, and then Dr. Bregel, what's the chain of command on, on that structure that you do there?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, that's the general chain that we've been following.
Okay.
Yeah, but the chain command, Joe, would have to go to the principal or vice principal or whoever the director's in charge first. So it should be caught, if, it used to be when I was teaching, if I went and bought something and I didn't produce a receipt, then I had to pay for it out of my own pocket.
Well, the first check and balance is the principal.
Yeah.
Making sure.
Right.
Okay.
Before she, before it gets up to Ed or gets up to Sandy. It should be already taken care of by the director or principal or athletic director, whoever.
Thank you. Um, my next, um, Dr. Bregel, who is handling the dropout rate and the graduation rate today at the high school?
Who is addressing it?
Yes.
All that is, should be their administrative team, uh, the counseling department. I could have Mr. Gianni, uh, come up here, but it's, it's all should be through the counseling department, through the assistant principals, through the principals, the administrative team at the high school.
Okay, well, um, two thousand and sixteen, our, our dropout rate was eight point two in our, um, that's pretty, that is amongst the highest in the state of Colorado. So my question is, what are we doing today to improve that?
The figure I have is five point six. I don't know what.
Mine's came off the CDE. And, um, two thousand and fifteen, it was six point nine. Two thousand and fourteen, it was six point oh. Two thousand and thirteen, it was five point oh. Two thousand and twelve, it was six point three. So I guess the CDE is wrong?
Well, I don't know how they're reporting it out right now, but I received this from CDE. Um, and you received an email from Janelle Astmas on telling you guys that this information was coming out. The information I got here is our, our dropout rate is, um, where'd it go? Five point six.
Well, um, somebody need to, um, submit some more paperwork to the CDE because before I came to this board meeting tonight, I wrote the eight point two, and that's why I'm asking a question. Even if it's five point seven, the state rate is two point three. So what are we doing as a district to lower the dropout rate?
So we're doing a lot of things. I mean, and I would, I would say that I would contribute this high dropout rate to our outreach that we tried to get kids back into school. Cuz if you look at our graduation rate, we've had the highest graduation rate. Um, I took it all the way back to two thousand and one. It has been the highest this last year, um, since two thousand and one. Um, the only highest one above, um, close to ours was seventy-eight point eight. We had seventy-nine point oh, and a completion rate of seventy-nine point two, where the state was eighty point three. So we just missed the state by one point three percent, percentage points, in terms of beating the state on graduation rates.
We, we, we went to graduation. I haven't, I haven't went there yet. I'm still at dropout.
Correct.
Um, can somebody tell me in this district, how many freshmens do we have at the beginning of the school year to today?
I don't know the exact number. I can look it up.
And then how many sophomores was there as freshmens, there sophomores today? Juniors was freshmens?
Uh-huh.
Because it said we lost three hundred and one students. And then if you go to your graduation rate, um, I got sixty-five point eight.
Can I see what you're looking at?
My notes.
Are you looking at the, there's a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year trend?
Yeah, I wrote the three-year trend cuz class of fifteen had a seventy-two point eight, and the class of fourteen had a seventy-four point six.
I have to go look at the three and five-year rates?
That's fine, but, um.
I could find that out for you, but what I've got from the state was these numbers I'm giving you right now, um, which was, um, seventy-nine percent, seventy-nine, um, graduation, seventy-nine point two completion, and then the dropout rate of five point six. Now, I do know that we, 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 we put a lot of effort into getting a lot of kids that left Adam City High School with very few credits to get them back into school. Some of them succeeded and graduated. Some of them decided it wasn't for them and left. We'll continue those efforts to make sure that we don't have kids out there who are one or two credits short and not receiving a diploma.
Once again, how many counselors do we have and deans do we have for the students at the high school to monitor them daily to know what we got before we keep losing these students? Cuz there's a big disparity of eight point two to a six point nine and a six point oh, and we losing students. Then we have graduation rates, um, something ain't, something ain't clicking. So my question is, I would like for this, Dr. Bregel, I'm asking you, at the next board meeting, give us a presentation of what were we doing in this district to stop the dropout rate in this, in these, for Adam City High School? And what are we doing with the graduation rate? Cuz some ain't, some ain't, um, correct here. And we need to find out why, how many, um, counselor is it per student? Is it workload too much? Cuz I think I asked the same question a year ago. And it's the same answer I'm getting. It seem like it's not getting nowhere. And I'm, uh, I'm getting frustrated with this.
Mr. Thomas, can I have those numbers so I could research for you what, what we're talking about?
You can take them.
And then I'll, I'll let you know exactly what.
Thank you. And my next question, Dr. Bregel, will go to you, our, the chief academic officer, Ms. Bogus?
Bogus, yeah.
Bogus, I'm sorry. After reading, uh, the CDE quest, um, letter sent back to the district about, uh, when we, um, appealed certain schools in the district, my question is, why did the district only send one year of data?
That appeal was not, um, put together by my department. That was put together by the technology assessment department, and they're not here to respond to that. The expectation was, though, however, they should, it should have been a three-year period. You sho, you showed trends. That wasn't done.
Right. And before it went out, did anybody question why one year instead of the three years or two years? Because, um, in finance, I wouldn't have, I'm, I'm happy one school, uh, made it, but they sent one year. One year data, that's unacceptable. So can, I mean, we saying, technology department did this, but shouldn't, shouldn't, um, Dr. Bregel, as the superintendent, shouldn't, um, shouldn't you and your team, your staff, with the chief academic officer, shouldn't y'all had monitored and said two or three years? Am I right or wrong?
Yes, I, I, I think that as a team, we should have been able to do that.
And I agree. We accept responsibility, and under our watch, we hope that, I expect it not to happen again. I'll make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Rotella. You gave the board this last year? Those?
Yes, sir.
Can you, um, give the board another copy of this? It's the beginning balance of, it'd be, um, two thousand and sixteen school year for each.
What their original budgets were that were there? Yes, probably glad to.
Thank you. I'm done. Anybody else?
I got a couple of things. Um, so we got an email of the items that was in these stores to be auctioned. Who made that decision to do that?
Uh, that direction came from some board members, um, to have those items auctioned. And that, uh, per board policy, uh, that they're not being stored over a certain period of time. So we had, we had members of the board come and walk those two facilities, give us direction of what to try to repurpose within the district and to, uh, uh, put the rest of it up for auction.
I take that was before I came on the board?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good enough. Thank you. Um, can we get an update on our eagle that's at the high school? And I just wanna, uh, kinda tell everybody, we found an eagle that was dedicated, I think, by the class of seventy-six or seventy-seven laying behind the maintenance shed. Uh, we asked, uh, Johnny to take it to the high school for the auto shop to get it refinished, so we can probably display it again at our high school where it should have been all along. Um, you have an update for us?
Yeah, the, immediately after that board meeting, you discussed that with me. Um, I went that next morning, um, talked to Scott. Um, he had the tractor back at the high school. I asked Mr. Serna where he wanted it, so the kids could begin, begin working on it. That, that day, it was moved right to where Mr. Serna wanted it, so you could be, so the kids can begin working on it. He said he'll have the kids working on it Monday. I think it was, uh, Monday. He had a workday, so.
So it's still in process?
Yes.
Have you decided where it's gonna be placed at at the high school?
Um, yes. Um, yes. Um, I have a great idea, but I don't know if everybody else agrees with that idea. So my idea was, um, you know the eagle that's out there on the field in the back corner? That it's, it's a shorter eagle? Um, I would think that moving that eagle out, um, and put it in, in the other side of the school on one of those planters, a concrete base, in the middle of one of those planters would be nice 'cause it would, you know, uh, show that eagle more. And then the eagle that's on the post would be larger and people could see it from, from a distance. So that was my idea, um, but it's not just my idea.
I have a suggestion and it's, it sounds good to me. Have it on top of the marquee. That's right there on Seventy Second Quebec.
Yeah, you could do that too. I mean-
I don't know of how heavy it is and if it could support that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beast.
But even the small one, you know, the smaller one, after you exchange it, putting it up there on top of the marquee?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm not for anything. It's not-
I don't, it's just a suggestion. Scott, you have?
I may have to look into, um, state requirements where we put that just as a plan review for permitting from the state of Colorado. So depending on where you guys decide, if you can keep me in the loop, then I can give guidance on what that process may take in order to get that.
It, it doesn't matter to me. I just wanna probably display it again wherever you, you guys decide. I just want people to see it again.
I could run it through student council to see what the kids think.
That'd be a great idea. Okay. Get the students involved.
Yep.
And then one other thing, um-
Let me go on that little bit, Joe. Uh, I just happened to be over at the CTE getting my Corvette out and I paid for it, so if anybody questions. Is that, uh, as I looked at it, I said, it took them two years to get that eagle to the school. Because that's the same eagle that Mr. Kramer, our former attorney, requested, says, I can't believe that we have there and it's just thrown back in the maintenance. And he requested, so they finally got there. So I'm happy on, uh, on that. But the questions I have, as I talk to Mr. Serna, I go, what are you going to do with this? He says, I don't know. They just brought it here. They threw it here. Nobody's giving me direction. So I said, well, I guess, I guess what you have to do, because I worked with metal before, painted cars and stuff. Says, if I was you, the first thing we gotta do is we gotta sandblast it because it's full of rust. It's all rusted out. And then I guess one of the wings is broke.
Yeah.
They broke one of the wings somehow. So he's gotta fix that. But then I said, well, what do you plan on doing? Painting it or what? Or should we take it and get it powder coated? Which is gonna cost a little more, but it's going to last a lot longer than paint. And says, well, everything's good, but where am I gonna get the money? So if we're gonna have this done, we gotta give him money so his kids can begin working on it. And I don't know if we should, if he should use what little funds he gets to use those to get that eagle, or are we going to make a presentation from this board if we want it up? He has to have money. Nothing's free anymore.
Right.
And exactly, I don't, Johnny, you can meet with student council or whoever you want to decide how you wanna do it. Do you wanna make it, the, the tree brown and then the eagles green and orange or what, uh, brown and yellow, whatever? But he has to have some kind of concept of what it is and Angelo will do it. I'm, I, that kid, he can make things look new, but he needs money to do it. So I don't know where are we going to, are we going to give him funds to do that?
What's your estimation of what it's gonna cost?
Well, I don't know. It, it depends on what we wanna do. If we're gonna powder coat it, I don't know, maybe Scott can give us a better quote on what, it would've cost you powder coat, uh, something. But I think first of all, you're gonna have to sandblast it. And I don't know if the district has a sandblaster to sandblast it. I know the body shop has a small one, but it's gonna take a lot more than a small one. Well, you may have to take it over here on the, uh, Brighton Road there, there's that sandblasting there. And probably a hundred and fifty dollars to maybe sandblast it.
So just for clarification, um, I don't know, when you had your conversation with him, I did talk to him about options and the broken wing that needed to be welded. And he said something about putting a gel coat on it and do you think it'd look nice with? I kinda like the, um, rusted look, 'cause that's kind of in right now. If you look at a lot of buildings downtown, a lot of the infrastructure that they're putting in is that kind of old metal look. And I said, that'd be nice if you put some type of gel coat on it. That'd be, that'd be nice. Um, we never talked about price, um, 'cause he was still kind of floating that around with what'd be best for that. But he said, first thing we need to do is, is start getting the kids to sand this stuff off, so.
I mean, I don't know, if we're gonna leave it rusted, that's fine. Just nip it off and shoot clear. And that's fine. I don't care. But just come up with some kind of decision to let him know what he's gotta do. And if, if all you gotta do is shoot clear, then I guess all we gotta do is give him a hundred and fifty dollars to buy the clear.
Right.
To spray it with clear. But I don't, I don't know what, how we want it. I don't- It's when they did it, when the, back in nineteen seventy-six, Mr. Hanson, which I was going to talk about here, when he had his metal shop class do it, they just made it, stuck it out in front of the CTE to show people what they do in that building. And he didn't paint it. He didn't do nothing. He just was all metal. So.
Yeah, and I didn't know if they wanted that, that look of that eagle to be, you know, that natural rust look. I don't, I've-
I don't know. So that's, you know, just talk to the students and see what they feel, the student council or get the idea from other students out there that way. But I know, I, I didn't talk money to him, but I know he needs money to do it. So I, I'm just saying, if we want him to do this is good. And I think we should put some kind of, talk to Mr. Hanson here and find out when, exactly when he had his students build that. Put some kind of little thing saying that this was done by the class, the VOTET class of nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight or something. Okay, that's good for me, Joe.
And the last item I have, and this is for Dr. Brago. I, I received another complaint about the food in the district. And I would like to have some sort of presentation on our next meeting, uh, either from the director of nutrition or from yourself on what you guys are gonna do about the food and the food quality in, in the district. Because I'm really tired of getting complaints about the food and the quality of food. And if the kids are wasting more food than they're eating, then it doesn't help the kids or the district.
And we can arrange a presentation for the next meeting if that's what you would like.
I don't know, maybe it'll change with Donald Trump.
You never know. I mean, this has been going on now since I've been on the board and it came to, uh, me again. Uh, my meeting prior to you on the nineteenth, when I was eating dinner, um, from a, um, person who has a child at Dupont. So it's kinda concerning. I know, uh, Mr. Thompson, so they're also at the same prom at Rose Hill. And I think it's got to the point where we need to be accountable for what we feed our kids.
Okay. Uh, last thing I have is, uh, I'd like to get a consensus for us to, for the district to purchase a plant and send it to the Hanson family in regard for the district, 'cause this man spent, uh, over forty years in our district and he did so much at that, the school that's Hanson, I don't know if you know, uh, it was called Oneida Elementary. And because of the work he did there and, and stuff he did in that di- area, they named the school after him. So I would like to show that at least the district still remembers who he is. And like to say if it's okay for us to send a plant to the family.
I, I think that's fantastic, but if I can take it one step further, I think we should plant a tree over that Hanson in his, his honor this spring. Uh, invite his, uh, family to do that. I mean, for-
So, and Hanson family was part of this district. They lived here for years. They lived, uh, over there by the Dupont area. One of our former board members lives in his home now. And, uh, all his boys were wrestlers. The Adam City Wrestling Team, high school. And, uh, one of them became the teacher, uh, here. So I think it, they've done a lot for our district and I, I, if we didn't do something, I think we'd lose face with them and I don't wanna do that.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah.
And, and the tree too?
Yeah, Monica, can, uh, you please order a plant and send it to the Hanson family? And then later on, we'll find, and you can get us a tree.
Yeah, we have some, um, plant that's, uh, dedication when we're ready.
Okay. That's it for me. Dr. Brago, you got any communication?
Um, no, just that, uh, I just encourage everyone to attend all the functions that we have going on in our, in our schools, the sporting events, the, all the other events also.
Anybody else? Anything else for communication? Okay, I need a motion for adjournment?
Some vote.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we will, uh, join at nine forty-two.